All right, folks, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. As always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands on the nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will call the roll. Supervisor Lafer is here. Supervisor Breslin is here. Supervisor Headland is excused. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Steen is here. Supervisor Shackleton is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Wilson is here. Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jetson is here. Supervisor Bishan is here. Supervisor Kneer is here. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Calabrese is here. Supervisor Lyon is excused. Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor Story is excused. Supervisor Vandermeulen is here. Supervisor Burnt is here. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan is here. Supervisor Thomas is present. Supervisor Prochnow is here. Supervisor Gilbert is here. Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf is here. Supervisor Hartong is here. Chair McCullough is here. All right, I believe Supervisor Story is planning on joining us online, but she's not with us yet, so excused if she doesn't make it. I would need approval of the minutes as item four. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Burnt seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Seeing none, all in a favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I don't have anything. Clerk doesn't? All right, on to public comments. And Supervisor Quinn, just hang on a second, let me turn your mic on. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we have the first reading of the ordinance change on accessory dwelling units. And typically, our board policy is that any item which has had a public hearing, which this item has, the public hearing is the only place that we really allow for public testimony on it to be heard by the board or the committee. But I know there are, at least, there are several people, I believe, that want to speak on this issue tonight. So I want to ask if the board would consider waiving our rules and allowing comments tonight on the ADU ordinance, if there are any.
Okay, so that you'll, I'll take that as a motion.
As a motion. Yeah, that requires a second and a...
Supervisor Morehouse, seconds. And it's a two-thirds vote. Do we need to do that roll call, or can we?
You wouldn't have to, but it's a very... You wouldn't have to, but it's a very good way of determining the numerical division between yeses and noes. You could give it a voice vote a try first, and if it's too close to call.
Supervisor Larry Bjork. Oh, hang on. Hold on. Okay, there we go.
I'm speaking to the motion and really wholeheartedly agree with Supervisor Quinn, even for the fact that something that affects many, that affects many people in Dunn County, pro and con, you know, board members should hear what has to be said. I would have no idea that it was a topic on a public hearing, but being able to speak before the county board is good government.
Any others speaking to the motion? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and try a voice vote. I suspect that people are going to be broadly in favor. If it's not immediately clear, then we'll go and we'll do a roll call. So all in favor of suspending the rules to allow public comment on the ADU?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd say that pretty clearly meets the two-thirds margin. We will go ahead and allow that. All right, with that cleared up, we will go to public comment, and this is the opportunity for people to come up and speak at the podium for three minutes. What we'll need you to do is come up, speak, tell us your name and where you live, and then you have your three minutes to address your issue. We'll start with Kelly Hayes. And then we'll do Dwayne Shubridge. So if you want to come up, Dwayne, and just be next to Kelly, so we can get through these.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Hayes, and I'm from Wheeler, Wisconsin. I know that the refugee resettlement issue is not on the agenda, but that is not for lack of trying on our part. We have requested numerous times that the executive committee take up this item, to no avail. So we are here putting it on the agenda through public comment. I have distributed two documents. One is the letter drafted to the County Board of Supervisors by the town of Otter Creek, requesting your action on the resettlement issue. The other is a draft copy of a Refugee Resettlement Pause Resolution, a starting point for you. Surrounding counties of Chippewa, St. Croix, and Barron have all taken action like this, being proactive in addressing the potential illegal resettlement of refugees in the Chippewa Valley. Two important points I want you to hear tonight. You have the authority to demand that the law be followed. If and when it is not, you are not obligated to participate in the activity. U.S. Statute 1522 protects communities that are targeted for resettlement by requiring that they are contacted and consulted in advance. This law has not been followed by World Relief in Eau Claire, and one would expect the same would happen in Dunn County as well. Second, this issue is not about the refugees themselves, but about the powers and entities that are forcing resettlement without proper assessment and evaluation of target communities and using these refugees as pawns. The most uncompassionate action we can take is to accept refugees without having assessed our capability to assist and support them. With a nearly $40 million county deficit, SDMA seeking $4 million in referendum monies, and area hospital closings, how will we assist and support refugees? These are questions that must be answered before placement, not after. Once again, I am asking you take up and adopt a resolution to pause refugee resettlement until such time as impact studies are completed and made public in Dunn County, Wisconsin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Dwayne Shubridge, and then Suzette Wallen will be next. So Suzette, you want to come up and be ready? Followed by Bob Cook.
My name is Dwayne Shubridge. I'm from Chippewa County. I've been working with this issue since last October, when it all started. One thing I want to bring to your attention is that World Relief has said from the beginning, they are from the federal government, you get no say. The people in the communities get no say. They can do what they want. They can bring in the 75 refugees. They've also said next year, to the nation, they want to bring 250,000 refugees into America. That's about 25,000 refugees into Wisconsin. If you do not have a say over these 75, you would get no say if they want to put 1,000 in here next year. They say they won't, but if you get no say, they get paid per head to bring people in. They brought people in into Eau Claire, even after we had major hospital closings, and we have mass joblessness there. So it is not about the refugees, it's about getting paid. And the battles we have all started like this. County boards have been leery to start it, but after we go through the education process and the county boards learn what's actually happening, they've been voting for this referendum close to about three-quarters for it. That's Democrat and Republican siding, working together, bringing this together. This is not a partisan issue. This is a people, local issue, trying to protect ourselves from overstep of the federal government. Thank you.
Next up is Suzette Wallen, then Bob Cook.
Hi, I am Suzette Wallen, and I live at 1314 Wilson Street in North Menominee. And I'm here, and just to state a few words, nothing long, and that is the cost. What is going to be the cost of us here in Dunn County? We have many who are on fixed incomes. We have many who cannot even afford to be in their homes. Let's think about what the refugees will, when they come here, what's going to happen. I don't think it's fair to the citizens in our Dunn County, or to them if they come in. So let's just think of the cost. The cost is big. So let's just do the pause and do the research. Thank you.
Next up, we have Bob Cook, followed by Bonnie Christensen.
Bob Cook, live at E. 6477 490th Avenue, Menominee. I'm the town chairman in the town of Red Cedar. We've been working with the PRD for months, trying to come up with an acceptable ADU proposal, which I think they're going to see tonight as the first reading. The town of Red Cedar unanimously approved what is now written, what you're going to be reading tonight. The one thing we do ask is that this goes back to the PRD one more time to get an amendment change that would ask the PRD to consider including all ADUs and a special exemption in zoning categories that permit housing and to provide townships parallel authority to special exceptions. I think the towns deserve that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bonnie Christensen, followed by Chuck Boyer.
Bonnie Christensen, Chippewa Falls. I've been involved in this, along with Dwayne, since it began. I've gone to county board, city council in Eau Claire, county board in St. Croix, Chippewa, and now Dunn County. I've seen all kinds of things. I have seen Zoom conference with the World Relief guy who absolutely lied. And the reason I know that is because I heard them talking at this Eau Claire City Council meeting. And when you ask it, when you think about cost, the reality is that the federal government pays for these refugees for the first three months, the county is on the dole after that. I'm an acupuncturist in Chippewa. I worked for a clinic in the cities, in Edina, Minnesota, for one year. Half of our population were Somali patients, and they were on Min Care. And they have to have a translator, they have to have a driver. I actually made house calls into their Somali complexes paid for by the state. They get food stamps, all the little girls have cell phones. They are well cared for. They are repeat customers because they can't read road signs, and they have accidents. They can't, they don't know where they are. They don't drive well. The other thing about, I'm just choosing Somalia because that's the one I'm really familiar with. And their war-torn country has not had public birth and death records for 20 years. It's all tribal warfare. And when a person is born, it's not recorded with the state. When they die, their family buries them. Within that date, it's not recorded. How do you vet a person that isn't born, that doesn't die? How do you vet these people that are coming? Now, that's one country, but then you get other war-torn ones from Congo, Democratic, Myanmar. What do you have? You have a Muslim population. Okay, we are all lovey-dovey. We love our fellow man, we want to support them. However, those people do not have the same agenda. They cannot agree with us, they cannot break Sharia law. They will be thrown out of their tribe. They do everything to obey Sharia law because they will be killed. You think about women's rights, about gay rights, about everything else, they don't have those issues. They kill those people. The other thing, in Hudson, they had people, five rooms packed, people presenting. They have the highest cost for education in the state. Their reading and writing and science were below the 50th percentile. So now you're going to have all these kids, foreign kids, that can't read, that need one-on-one tutors. Are you going to pay for that at the expense of your own children? Are you going to pay for their healthcare? And they are demanding. They come here, they want their services. They don't hide. So you pay for it, and they can't work.
That would be your three minutes, thank you.
We're very much honored for letting you speak.
Next up is Chuck Boyer, followed by Joanne Upfall.
Okay, my name is Chuck Boyer. I'm from Wheeler, Wisconsin, Otter Creek. I was at the meeting, the town board meeting, when they voted to send this request for a resolution on pausing. Two of the three supervisors voted for it. There was a short discussion beforehand, and I asked, what exactly are we sending this letter to pause? What's going on that we need to pause? I couldn't get a clear answer from the two supervisors who were there. It was all sort of vague, and it was about what might happen, and so on. So I'm here to find out, is there any activity right now in Dunn County involving the possible resettlement of refugees here? If there is not, how can you pause something that's not happening? It seems to me the letter seemed kind of silly to me, and maybe even a little paranoid. But it has nothing to do, I mean, if it comes to Dunn County, a proposal from someone like World Relief, they have to go through the law to do it. It can be stopped if, for example, if the county doesn't want any of their departments to meet with these people as part of the infrastructure, they could tell them not to, and they can't bring them here because they would be voted out. I mean, in Eau Claire, the city council, the county board, all voted for it. It went on for months. April 29th, they just had their quarterly meeting, which is mandated by the refugee law to do every quarterly. But here, I don't, I don't know of any proposal to do anything here, so it seems totally moot to me to be proposing a resolution to pause what doesn't, what isn't happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joanne Upfall, followed by Joyce Euler.
My name is Joanne Upfall, and I live in Boyceville. Thank you for allowing me to talk. I handed out papers because I sent all of you emails, and I, when I checked my email, I only had one response, and I'm hoping that each one of you will respond to me and tell me how you stand on this refugee pause deal. My issue is with refugee resettlement situation in western Wisconsin. According to federal regulations, refugees can be resettled into communities within a 100-mile radius of the Refugee Resettlement Nonprofit Organization's office. Here in western Wisconsin, that organization is World Relief. World Relief signed a contract with the Eau Claire City Administrator and has a physical office in Eau Claire. Therefore, unless you do a pause, they can automatically bring refugees into our county. This means that going forward, World Relief could settle refugees in Dunn County. I would like the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to make a resolution to pause refugee resettlement into Dunn County for two years, thus giving Dunn County time to complete a comprehensive financial impact study. For the first 90 days, World Relief takes care of the refugees with money that the federal government has provided for each refugee. After 90 days, if these refugees haven't found work, the county welfare programs will take care of them. If the refugees don't speak English and are unskilled, it will be difficult for them to find jobs, and therefore, our local government programs will provide for them. This will have an impact on our housing situation, our schools, our police and fire departments, and our local medical centers. And ultimately, the Dunn County taxpayers, property taxes will increase. Please do your due diligence and find out what this will cost us taxpayers before we get into this situation. Chippewa, Barron, and St. Croix County boards have already passed resolutions to pause the refugee resettlement for two years, and I would like Dunn County to do the same. The financial statistics from the cities of St. Cloud, Wilmer, Edina, Burnsville, Whitewater, Appleton, and Barron could be resources for the Dunn County Financial Impact Study. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Joyce Euler, followed by Jean Ringer.
My name is Joyce Euler from Menominee. The Wisconsin State Refugee Office and the Eau Claire World Relief Resettlement Office discuss between themselves how many refugees, from what countries, should be sent where, within the office's 100-mile radius. Best practices suggest that these conversations should be held officially and transparently. After the initial 90-day resettlement period ends, responsibility for care will fall to local social service providers and local governments, local governments like this Dunn County Board of Supervisors. While the resettlement goal for this year was 75 persons, the state and World Relief can really pick any number in future years that suits them. As someone who previously worked resettling refugees in Florida, I can tell you that people are getting paid by the refugee, and I was under a lot of pressure to get the number of refugees I resettled up. Large numbers of arrivals in need of special care can potentially overwhelm budgets and services. Consulting agencies and governments affected is just best practices. It is being polite. It is also federal law, found in 8 U.S. Code 1522. Quote, "Local voluntary agency activities should be conducted in close cooperation and advance consultation with state and local governments," unquote. This law is meant to protect you, and it is not being followed. It is also best practices for this board to listen to the concerns and fears of its citizens, as you're doing tonight. Please put a request for a temporary pause in refugee resettlement on the agenda for a future meeting. It would be a great way to show concern for the concerns of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jean Ringer, followed by Eldora, I'm going to say your last name incorrectly. Eldora.
Hi, I'm Jean Ringer at N. 7198 190th Street, Nap. I am speaking as chair of the town of Lucas. The town of Lucas discussed the inclusion of accessory dwelling units in the zoning code at our board meeting on Tuesday, May 14th. The consensus was that ADUs are a good idea, but need additional controls as provided by the special exceptions designation. Circumstances such as traffic, groundwater, soils, and sanitation, and also circumstances unforeseen today, and compatibility vary between properties and neighborhoods. These can be recognized and addressed as conditional, conditions for use by the county and township. The special exceptions designation will allow the county and township to implement appropriate conditions for local circumstances. Parallel approval authority for special exceptions will provide the authority for the town oversight of circumstances particular to that town. We ask the county board to delay action on the proposed zoning amendment regarding accessory dwelling units in Dunn County. Please ask the PRD committee to consider including ADUs as a special exception in zoning categories that permit housing, and to provide townships a parallel approval authority to special exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eldora DeRod, followed by Richard Breen.
Speaking on the ADUs, the R1 has been discussed as possibility of having an extra little unit built on. I'm not in favor of that. My daughter's lot is 40 by 60 here in town, there is no room. But the rest of the R-type of ones, I see no reason why they can't be built. Myself, we're looking at building one for a handicapped grandson, who is 26, and as any respectable young man of 26 is looking for a housing unit of his own. He does not cook, he does not drive. He will need supervision the rest of his life, but that doesn't stop him from wanting to be an independent young man. And by having his own home, he can have those facilities. And it just seems like 600 square foot for a young man should be accessible for almost anyone that would want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Richard Breen, followed by Cecilia Cooper.
Richard Breen, N. 6198 County Road K, Menominee. As Supervisor Quinn knows, I've been involved with this ADU issue for almost three years now, I guess. It's been a while. I rise in favor of this proposal. I understand there's some concerns about local township control, and that makes sense. I hope you'll think about not being too exclusive in that process. Our situation was our son invited us to move up with him, and my wife and I, being in our 70s, said, hey, that's good, we'd like to do that. And we thought about establishing an ADU on his property. He had several acres, and we were out in a rural GA area, and we thought, oh, that would be good. And we found out, oh, zoning doesn't allow it, even though it wouldn't cause any problem for neighbors, because there weren't any. Everything was really good for an ADU. We ended up doing something a little different to comply with existing regulations, but it would have been really nice if we could have just made an ADU for our situation. I know there are many other people in that situation. We got a lot of support when we wrote letters before to the PRDC. And I can only imagine that this will be favorably looked at as one small piece of dealing with the housing problems in this area, which are enormous. I'm kind of glad I'm not an immigrant at this point. It looks like it's going to be a tough slog, but we definitely need more and better housing. I have children that went to school here, and I remember very clearly going into one of the places where they rented and thinking, if I were not a nice person, I would get out the gasoline can and burn the thing to the ground because it just was not a good place to live. It didn't meet code, it was so many things wrong. So please, think about the housing as a larger picture and consider this ADU proposal very seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Cecilia Cooper, followed by Michael Cooper.
My name is Cecilia Cooper. I live in Menominee, Wisconsin, or Dunn County. I'm here tonight to present a signed petition for a call to do a moratorium on any resettlement of refugees in Dunn County. The reasons is this is taxation without representation. World Relief did not follow the proper protocol, and our local individuals do not have a say in when these refugees will be placed here, how many will be placed here, or as to the cost or burden of supporting them. As has been pointed out a couple of times already, the refugees are supported for only 90 days, and then they become the responsibility of the Dunn County taxpayer. This, I am asking the board to do your due diligence and do a cost analysis of any potential resettlement in this area. The time to do it is now, before we receive any refugees, not afterwards. This petition has 47 pages of people from Dunn County who have signed in favor of putting a pause on any refugee resettlement until there has been a fiscal evaluation of the financial, social, and legal pressures that will be put on our schools, our medical, our social services, our housing. We currently have a homeless situation in Dunn County already, and as the gentleman before me just pointed out, we have a housing crisis. The homeless shelter that was built in Menominee... The homeless shelter that was built in Menominee was full before it was completed, and they get to stay there only 20 days, whether they have a place to go to or not. So please consider putting a resolution to pause any resettlement in Dunn County until the due diligence has been done to see what the cost will be and how it will affect us. You were elected to represent us, the citizens and taxpayers of Dunn County. Please, please do your due diligence for us.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Cooper, followed by Bill Hogsath.
Michael Cooper, following my wife, Menominee here. When we did the petition collection, I do not recall, after we explained to people what the petition was about, that we got any kind of negative response. People always sign that, okay? So if there's 47 pages, 10 people to page, figure that out. Okay, that's 470 people. Not, I don't know, there were five people that were negatively responding to that. So if you just spread that out across the whole county, you can start to get an idea of how people feel about this. And I guess I get a little frustrated, because, well, for example, we have an autistic grandson, and he needs special services. How is that going to be impacted by spending money on people, immigrants? You guys had a $3 or $4 million proposal for added debt this year. How is that going to impact, how are the immigrants going to impact that? I think it really is just good governance to just stop and say, let's put a pause, see what's going on, cost this out before you just lockstep, follow what the government wants you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, you have Bill Hogsath.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Bill Hogsath. I am with a local organization called Grassroots Organizing Western Wisconsin. I'm here because we are experiencing a housing crisis in Dunn County. Starting last month, our members started knocking on doors throughout the county to talk to people about their housing situation. Most of the people who we've talked to are people who are working full-time jobs, but yet they are still having to pay more than a third, or sometimes half, of their income to stay in their home, to cover rent, which makes it harder for them to afford groceries and pay doctor bills. So we are in a situation here in Dunn County where people can't even afford to live here. Just last week, in a neighborhood in North Menominee, we were talking to a mom who pays $1,300 a month for a two-bedroom apartment with no basement. Her 12-year-old daughter overheard us and stepped into the conversation to share that she, all she wants is her own bedroom, but yet she knows not to get her hopes up, because she's been watching her parents struggle for so many years. So even our kids know there is a housing crisis here. So I'm here to speak in favor of the comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment to allow accessory dwelling units in the county, and I want to applaud the work of the PR&amp;D Committee for bringing this amendment to the full board. I encourage you to continue with that amendment as it's written. The way I see it, what I like about this amendment is that it removes barriers for, to empower the people in our county who own property to be small-scale developers. Instead of relying on just corporate developers to come and build these massive multifamily complexes, this amendment opens the door to more incremental growth, where people who are property owners can be part of the solution and use their property as they wish. So this amendment also enables residents of our county to generate wealth on their property and bring in housing revenue if they were to choose to rent their property to tenants. So what that does, that I like, is that it takes housing revenue, and instead of exporting it out to shareholders in some real estate investment firm, it keeps the housing revenue right here in Dunn County. 60% of the people who responded to the Dunn County Housing Survey identified exactly these types of residences as the biggest housing need in our community, 2,000 and less square feet. I just want you to absorb that. 60% of the people in our county responded to that survey, say this is the need. I'm really excited for your leadership on this issue. This is an important thing. This is a great first step in the right direction, so I urge you to move forward with the amendment as it's written. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That concludes everyone who's signed up. Okay. I have a couple. We have a couple that came in via email.
Okay, I've got one that came in by phone from Gabriella Roloff, who said she heard there was a potential for Dunn County receiving refugees. She wanted the board to know that she doesn't want that, because we don't have the money for it, and we should take care of our people first. And she wanted that relayed.
Let's see. On May 28, 2024, the Dunn County Board of Supervisors received the following communication. Dear County Board of Supervisors, we, the Town Board of Supervisors of Town of Otter Creek, would like to address the emerging issue in the Chippewa Valley of refugee resettlement through the World Relief Office in Eau Claire. 8 U.S. Code 1522, Section 2A and B, see excerpts below, in part require potentially affected local governments and agencies to be consulted with on a regular basis when refugee placement decisions are being made. We want to encourage you, as our county supervisors, to take up means by which our community will be protected and until such time as we are consulted regarding placement of refugees and the law has been followed. There must be a clear adherence to the law and a knowledge of how our community can support and resettled, any resettled refugees. To not have these in place puts Dunn County citizens and refugees at risk. I suggest means of addressing this would be to adopt a resolution to pause any such placement until such time as we are able to have a county, as we as a county have addressed the resettlement issue. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Respectfully submitted, Cecil Hayes, Supervisor 1, Town of Otter Creek. Bob Bernier, Supervisor 2, Town of Otter Creek. On 6/14/2024, the following communication was received. To members of the Dunn County Board, I am writing this letter as an educational offering to the committee to consider in relation to the proposed change to the attached accessory dwelling units, AADU, slash junior accessory dwelling units, JADU ordinances. As the ADRC Manager for the ADRC of Dunn County, that stands for Aging Disability and Resource Center, I'm acutely aware of the current and growing need for caregiver support for elders and those with disabilities in our community. Allowing families to care of their loved ones on their property is a vital need at this time, and the need will continue to grow. There are currently huge shortages of caregivers in workplaces or available for hire in communities, and families are needing to step into those roles. These needs are anticipated to grow exponentially with the increase of the aging population. One recent statistic I was made aware of is that in the year 2030, only six years away, the population of Wisconsin Knights that are aged 85 and older will increase 65% from where they are today. This age group tends to be the one, tends to be the one most in need of assistance and services, and the huge growth in these numbers are a mere six years now from, demonstrates the need for action now to support those who may be able to provide needed care. It would be wonderful if we could creatively look at ways to make these caregiving arrangements easier for our family caregivers, and allowing for AADU slash JADU-type housing arrangements could be looked at as a way to offer support to the growing number of folks with these needs. Another need of these sort of family units could help fulfill would be the need for childcare provision. There's also a large shortage of childcare providers in our community, and providing families with this option allows extended families to more easily fill childcare needs. This also gives our elders a strong purpose in life, many of which our elders are lacking. If any members of the board have any questions or need clarification, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'm more than happy to discuss this further with you. I can be reached in my office at the ADRC of Dunn County at telephone number 715-231-641, or by the email tfisher@co.dunn.wi.us. Thank you so much for your time. Respectfully submitted, Tracy Fisher, ADRC Manager, ADRC of Dunn County. On 6/18, the following communication was received. My name is Benjamin James Mammon. I live at N 3821, State Road 25, Menominee, Wisconsin, 54751. And when I was my son aged seven, my mom had a dream to own a farm and to, and to let any of us 11 kids who wanted to live slash work there together. I remember my parents even tried to purchase a piece of land to pursue this dream by county living, and it fell through for one reason. Now, her dream of living together and having multigenerational place to live is mine, and now I'm asking you, who lead our township, to help my mom's and my dream be lived out through the passing of Chapter 13 on accessory dwelling units to allow ADUs in our comprehensive zoning areas and in general agricultural zoning. Please consider keeping it simple, affordable, and realize that during this difficult discussion over the last few months, we are not simply forwarding into new waters with this ordinance or clinging to a familiar way of living, but we are simply going back to what has been humanities tendencies, or as I would like you to compare it to going back to the familiar. People all over the world live and thrive better in tribes or family groups. My family and friends will be able to thrive, gain equity, and be safe if I am able to offer them a place to be at home for a while. Please help make this a livable reality for us, others like me, and the next generation. Sincerely, Benjamin Mammon. On 6/19 at 10:33 a.m., the following communication was received from Peter McHenry, 715-410-3862, P R D A M Henry@gmail.com. We support the Refugee Resettlement Pause Resolution. We ask that you would put this on the agenda and hear concerns people have on this issue. We ask that our email be read and allowed into public record. Thank you. At 6:19 at 10:34 a.m., the following communication was received from Joanne Uptholz. Joanne, do you want me to read this? Okay. Thank you. At 6:19 at 3:40, 3:57 p.m., the following communication was received. Dear County Board Supervisors, as a member of the Dunn County Health-Dunn-Wright Housing Team since 2019, I've heard many people express a wish for smaller ADU home options in our community. Our zoning office gets more calls on this than almost anything else. There's a real desire to create community by adding a smaller home to a lot with a home already existing. This is nothing new. Many of us grew up on farms with a second house for the hired hands or farm manager. Please note that the same standards will apply to the secondary structure as they do to the other structures under zoning. ADUs will not be, quote, "shacks," end quote, or allowed to flush toilets into creeks. Just a few of the non-factual things we've been told people are concerned about. Local Dunn County taxpayers are asking for affordable options. Some have a need to house a disabled adult child they would like to keep close, but give a measure of privacy. We also have heard from older folks wishing that they could move into something smaller and easier to manage, while they let their children and grandchildren take over the, quote, "big house," end quote. Plus, many younger adults want to live closer to their parents so they can help as the parents age. Because of so many community members asked, and because it is only, it is one way to easily add more homes to our local stock, the PR&amp;D Committee and county staff worked hard over the last year to review the ordinances and create options for accessory dwelling units. Several local towns objected to having these concerns in R1, that's residential's 1, areas, as the committees responded with other, another round of changes. Now, you will have the chance to consider ADUs as part of the effort to confront the local crisis and lack of homes in our community. As we consider amendments to the rules and encourage or discourage the building of homes, local representatives will need to remember that our major employers, healthcare institutions, and schools are all concerned with the lack of home options for their workers. Where can we add home options? We will need more homes of all kinds, thousands of them, if we are able to accommodate those who wish to live and work here in Dunn County. Already, many of our children have had to move elsewhere because they lack options for homes or apartments here. Who will take care of us when we're older? Who will pay the taxes that repair our roads? Who will be here to join our service organizations and our houses of worship? The younger generation, they will need a place to live. Please keep an open mind as you consider options for housing in our community. Sincerely, Luisa Gersamo, Human Development and Relationship Educator for UW Extension, Dunn County. Thus concludes the received public comments.
I think that's the lot. If not, we will come back to it at the next meeting. All right. Let me get back to the agenda here. Is there anyone else who wanted to make a public comment who has not had that opportunity? Seeing none, that closes public comment. Item 7, appointments. You have appointments in front of you. Okay, I would need a motion for the replying Randy Prochnow and Andrew Higgin and Austin Witt to the Transportation Supervisor Steen moves. Do I have a second? Supervisor Wolf. Any speaking to the appointments? It's pretty clear. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? The appointments that need board confirmation pass. The rest are at the remit of the chair. That closes appointments, although I'm sure we'll have more soon. Reported the county manager, Chris.
All right. Good evening. I really had like three hours of material, but Nick and I always have a friendly, non-monetary wager going as to what time the meeting will end, and his is longer than mine, so I'm going to go a lot shorter. Okay, so you, first item, you have purchase orders over $40,000. There are just two. Any questions about those? Pretty straightforward. All right. And the other thing that was included in your packet, I'm just going to give you a brief background on, was I gave you, I sent you out a very little print, multi-page document that was put together last year regarding mandated services by department or division. As I mentioned in my monthly county manager video, I'm not sure that a lot of people understand that counties operate as an arm or an extension of the state. When we speak of mandates, we're usually talking about legal requirements that the state places upon counties, directing them to do specific things or provide specific services. Counties have little control over the costs of the mandates, and it's not uncommon to have needs that are in excess of the state funding that is provided. Sometimes no funding is provided with regard to a mandate, and this is what's called an unfunded mandate. More confusingly, things are often mandated, but the definition is not provided as to what, to what degree. So for instance, Wisconsin law states that counties have a primary responsibility for the well-being, treatment, and care of the mentally ill, developmentally disabled, alcoholic, and other drug-dependent citizens residing within the county. That's the mandate, but how it is carried out varies drastically from county to county. Another consideration that comes into play with mandates is what happens if you don't fund them well. So for instance, the board decides not to provide much by the way of mental health services. It still has a responsibility for all of the costs for emergency mental health services in the forms of things like emergency detentions in a hospital or an institution, and the related costs for providing treatment to people who are placed on a commitment order. It might cost $200 an hour to provide therapy services, but it costs $1,300-plus dollars a day in a mental health institution for someone to be hospitalized, plus the related law enforcement time to transport them and the court-related time related to the emergency detention process. Here are a couple examples of unfunded mandates. Medical examiners and coroners. So in Wisconsin, medical examiners are appointed or hired, positions and coroners are elected. We have medical, and the medical examiner in Dunn County and staff. Well, MEs and coroners are required to determine cause and manner of death and report on such, along with a lot of other things that they do. No state funding is provided for those services to counties. Similarly, counties are required to have law enforcement and access to jails. However, no or almost no state funding is provided for law enforcement services. As a result, the sheriff's department is one of the largest utilizers of county tax levy, and it fills in the difference with fees, donations, and asset sales, such as selling used squad cars. So aren't you glad you wanted to know more about mandated services, and here's such a simple and straightforward answer? As in all things, Beata and I are happy to meet with you and talk with you about any questions that you have. Suffice it to say that mandates are something that county boards struggle with kind of everywhere. So any questions about that? I'd ask you to kind of keep this as a document as we work through budget, because these are the questions that come up about what happens. Do we have to do that? Don't we have to do that? And this is a great starting reference document.
Supervisor Willsey.
What happens if something's mandated and we don't do it, or we don't have the money to do it?
It sort of depends on what it is. So sometimes it results in legal action. So for instance, a number of years ago, Lucy stated, Nick's going to know this better than I do, Helen F. Helen F. case.
Judy K.
Oh, we had Helen F. and Judy K. Anyway.
Helen F. was for five.
Okay. All right. So Judy K. was a developmentally disabled adult woman who needed to have a, who needed to have services, and the county argued, Dunn County argued, that they couldn't afford the services that she required to live independently, and the case made its all the way through the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And the case made its all the way through the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And they essentially said, counties have bottomless pocketbooks. You have to pay for it. So sometimes there's legal action brought, sometimes other kinds of funding are withheld. So if we were, are provided money to provide, like, I'll just use mental health services, but like we're provided some money to provide mental health services, and then we decide that we're going to not do that. Or child protective services is probably a better, even a better one, or adult protective services, we decide we're not going to do that. The state could say we're not going to give you the money to do that. There also are a number of things that we're not necessarily required to do, we're, we're not required to do. But if we stop doing them, we have to pay the state to do them on our behalf. So it's not a one-size-fits-all answer, but there are, we risk, probably the most important thing is we either risk some sort of regulatory or legal action.
Yeah, in general, it just works out to be more expensive than going ahead and doing what the state tells us to do. Not an answer I think any of us are particularly happy with, but. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Chairman, Chris, question on a person needing very expensive services. And the state says it's mandated. Is there residency requirement? Or do, or do people shop counties to receive benefits?
So it's, it, again, we're the government, so there's never a super straightforward answer. But as a general rule, yes, there are residency requirements. So things that are related to mental health, substance use, developmental disabilities usually have a multi-pronged test to see where residency is. It's where you have to be there voluntarily. It's where you have, where you intend to reside, you're there voluntarily. So I mean, like you can't be placed here by the court and then become a resident. You're voluntarily, you're intent to reside, you have a permanent domicile. So you can't be like living in a hotel or a treatment facility, you have to have some sort of, but you could be living with friends, but you can't be in a temporary type of a facility, facility. And it seems like there's one other piece to that, but in a sense, and we apply a test to determine residency.
That looks like it for questions.
Okay, that's all I've got this evening.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna, oh, sorry, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know coming in, I've seen like you know, four cars parked at the courthouse on that end of the judicial center. Are they part of that trade-in for the squad cars? They're all black and SUVs. They've been there for the last couple of months.
Certainly possible. I don't know for sure.
Just kind of curious.
Not oftentimes they get parked in front of the highway department, but it could be, because things that go for sale are then listed on the Wisconsin surplus site. And then they can be, you know, you can come and take a look at them or whatever, and then once they're sold, then there's a process for collecting the money, transferring the title and all those sorts of things. So it's not an expedient process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this time for sure. I'm going to take a very brief pause between eight and nine. We won't be addressing items that aren't on the agenda. That's part of Wisconsin Open Meetings law. And the ADU, this is first reading, so in anyone who, anyone who wants to stay, you're very welcome. We are happy to have you here. You're, you are our public. But I wanted to give people who perhaps wanted to get out the door and not stay through the whole meeting the opportunity. So if you want to. I have to stay. Thank you for that.
Although they must have interacted the county administrator. Court insurance.
Okay, folks, if y'all want to start drifting back to your chairs, that would be great. I may have to get up and do my sheepdog impression. Okay, folks. Now he's still here. All right. The report of the county manager being concluded, we will move to item nine. Reports of departments, starting with environmental services. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. We're all ready to go, and then you called for a little bit of a break, and it's kind of similar to icing the kicker, I think. So that was Tom's idea. Anyway, my name is Chase Cummings. I'm the county conservationist with the land and water conservation division here for Dunn County. With me tonight and alongside me is Anne Woodarchik, the manager for the planning and land use division, and Tom Carlson, the county surveyor and manager for the surveying department. Together, we share in the management of the environmental services department. We want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our 2023 annual report. In your packet, you should have our written reports, but tonight we will have a small presentation. And as has been directed, and you may have seen in other reports from other departments, we'll try to focus on one small part or one big part of some of the work that we do. And you should know that it's just one part. As you would expect in many of our departments, we have our hands in a lot of different programs and different activities. So if you have questions regarding other things that you might think that we do or know that we do, we'd be happy to try to answer them now or at a later date. So I mentioned, there's not a single department head for our, for our department. We share in management decisions and administration within the, our department, budgeting. We budget under the same budget, report to the same committee. But there are some efficiencies that we gain from having shared management, particularly when it comes to some of the activities that we do within our broader department and our divisions, they tend to overlap. So it does make some sense quite, quite a bit of the time that we are a one department. Certainly, we do have a rotating facilitator. That's why I'm speaking with you tonight. I'm not sure we really rotate it too much. It's more of less, you know, just kind of a shared point of contact for people within our department. But collectively, Anne, Tom and myself do receive requests and inquiries and share them amongst ourselves to, to make a decision. In 2023, this was our oversight committee. Many of you are here, I think, right? With the exception of the last person on the list, this is a representative. By statute, the county is required to have a land conservation committee. Generally speaking, the PRD Committee serves in that role with the addition of a representative from the Farm Service Agency, a USDA entity. In 2023 and prior years, that was the case. Legislative changes recently at the state legislature have changed that now with concerns over that member being viewed as a representative of FSA or Farm Service Agency. And FSA was not necessarily in support of that. So legislative changes have taken place, and we'll be trying to implement those as we move forward. But this was a 2023 report, so this is who we had on that committee. So I'll jump into the land and water conservation division, a division that I oversee. This is our staff. We have eight of us in the, in the division. Typically, all of them are conservation planners with some technical skills as well, primarily working on ordinances and other administrative code that is administered through the counties. That's the state sets up for conservation, soil and water conservation, water quality type activities within the county. Here is a list. I don't expect to go through all that here tonight. Like you said, we're going to refocus on one. But we do have a tendency to sometimes, as a broader department, be a catchall for some things that don't necessarily fit in some other departments, and particularly when it comes to land use. And as you can see here, within our land and water conservation division, there's a number of programs that we get ourselves into, all primarily with the intention of assisting the citizens of the county in participation in a lot of programs. Tonight, I want to focus on one of the big things that we embarked upon in 2023 regarding groundwater monitoring. Many of you have heard reports of our private well monitoring program before, but I think it's important to draw on that, especially for any new supervisors that may not be familiar with that. So in 2023, with the use of dedicated ARPA funds, we set out with the assistance and the, I guess, the great pleasure of working with our public health department to establish a private well monitoring program with those funds. It's very difficult to come across funding that can support private well monitoring, and we have a number of requests on a routine basis from citizens looking to test the quality of their drinking water. Eventually, with this, like I mentioned, the assistance of outreach with public health and other aspects, we were able to collect about nine hundred and ninety-five samples across the county. And as you can see on the map here, this is the distribution of where those samples were collected. So the total project cost is in the, the table on the screen. We started out with a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Based on the sampling that we collected in 2023, we did have some remaining funds available that we did carry forward with approval by all of you into this year, of which I'll touch on at the end of this presentation. Real quick, some of the parameters that we tested for PFAS, you may have heard that term, that acronym. I'm not going to try to say the actual words because they're quite, it's quite a mouthful, but basically it's looking at chemicals that could be found in a number of products that likely we're wearing today on clothes, things that we use, but can have a potential for negative health effects in, in the environment. So we did test for those. That was something of interest of citizens and of PRD Committee as well as others. And fourteen of the twenty-two towns have samples that came back with presence of PFAS compounds in the water. But at the time and still currently, those results are within the safe drinking water standard. But it should be noted that it is present. The map on the right is our arsenic, I guess, results as well. And we did see some elevated arsenic levels that can be humid-induced, but also naturally occurring in the bedrock of our area. And then the one that's typically talked about, nitrates. These are two, two different, two maps kind of illustrating the nitrate concentrations found within the sampling program. You can see in the southeast part of the county where we have some of our more intense land use, some of our more fragile sandy soils that may be able to leach nitrate ease more readily. We are seeing higher levels of nitrate in those, in those wells. Our county average for, for this program was four point four two milligrams per liter nitrate. The safe drinking water standard is ten. So we are, on average, meeting the safe drinking water standard. But I will note that the highest sample that we collected and several others were near this was up to forty parts per million or milligrams per liter nitrate. While the safe drinking water standard is set at ten, particularly for a, a, a group of sensitive individuals or sensitive community members such as infants, pregnant women and young children, there are some caution and concern for long-term exposure by all people that consume drinking water with high nitrates for some other public health effects or personal health effects that you might not want, such as colon cancer, thyroid disease and, and others. So it is of importance, and nitrates is also cheap and easy to test for. And it's also can be viewed as an indicator nutrient. So if nitrates are elevated in your drinking water, the question that would be, what else is with it? The map on the right is kind of a heat map. It's just one model that we can run through some of our GIS software. And it is a two-D model of a three-D system, three-D meaning that groundwater moves, it's not stagnant. And this map is not indicative of, if you were to drill a new well in some of those areas, that you would be receiving or obtaining water that is unsafe. It is unique to each site, but this gives you an indication of maybe where we can focus our efforts in the future if necessary. And lastly, I mentioned, we do have some carryforward funds to continue some private well monitoring this year in 2024. We're going to be collecting about two hundred and forty samples with that. We also have come across the opportunity to work with the Department of Ag, Trade and Consumer Protection, or DATCAP. And their interests, as they do every year statewide, are looking at private well monitoring with respect to pesticide use. And they've been able to, I guess, try to clear out some of our waitlist individuals as we reprioritize them where we can shift money around. So all in all, we'll be looking at about three hundred samples for the, for the year of 2024 of private wells. And then I'm happy to, to note as well, Heather Wood within our office in cooperation with the former public health employee, Caitlin Engel, applied or entered into a, I guess, is technically a competition through the National Environmental Health Association and have received an award of thirty-five thousand dollars that we're hoping to decide how we can spend that, that money going forward longer term to continue some of this private well monitoring as our citizens are, are asking for. It could help us establish better trend analysis. It could help us establish better trend analysis and look at some more details of how how or where we can prioritize some of our conservation work. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom and then I'll follow up with Anne and then we'll be happy to answer any questions on our topics.
Thank you, Chase. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Tom Carlson. I'm the county surveyor. I see a lot of familiar faces here, but also a lot of new faces. So it's good to meet everybody. Of the three divisions within Environmental Services Department, I operate or manage the smallest division. It's myself. I have Greg Botzer, who works in the office. He's a licensed professional land surveyor, and then Troy Stoll is a survey technician. Greg and Troy do the bulk of the field work. I'm pretty much an office person. So I want to go through the major duties that my office performs, and then I'm going to focus on on one of them for the remainder of the evening. So we review and approve regulated land development, land developments, which would include certified survey maps, subdivision plots and condominium plots. We perform all surveys required by the county or by a court. We assist the highway department with various projects throughout the year. We file and index survey records. We administer the county land division ordinance. We assist the general public and other county departments and agencies with land surveying related questions. Today alone, I can't tell you how many people stopped in or called with questions on on land, title, boundary disputes, things like that. So it's very busy. We provide copies of survey records upon demand. In the past, people would come in, we'd make copies, charge them. Now most of our records are online. That information can be pulled up on your computer on a Sunday afternoon from your living room. So we don't see a lot of traffic that way, looking for copies anymore. And then we also perform remonumentation and maintenance of the US Public Land Survey System corners. So tonight I'm going to focus on the top duty, which is review and approval of regulated land divisions. So I'm going to begin with Wisconsin State Statute 236.45, which is titled Local Subdivision Regulation. And up on the screen here, I have the purpose statements that are listed within that statute. I'm not going to go through all them, but basically what we're trying to do with the land division ordinance is fulfill these purpose statements, okay? So if we dig a little deeper, Chapter 236.45 Sub 2 gives Dunn County the authority to adopt a land division ordinance. It's called delegation of power. So any municipality, town or county that has established a planning agency, which we have, that would be the PR and D committee, may enact ordinances governing the subdivision or other division of land that are more restrictive than the provisions of this chapter, except that no ordinance may modify in a more restrictive way time limits, deadlines, notice requirements, or other provisions of this chapter that provide protections for a subdivider. So what we have done is we've adopted Chapter 16 of the Dunn County Code of Ordinances. And again, that's titled The Land Division Condominium and Surveying Regulations. Back up here. Okay, so some history. So when I started here in 2008, we had the land division ordinance. It was adopted in March of 2006. It hadn't had any rewrites or amendments done to it. So working with Corp Counsel's Office, in 2021, we did a complete repeal and recreation. Then we adopted some amendments in July of 2023. So that's what we're working from right now. The county land division ordinance applies to all the unincorporated areas of the county. So that's very important. Our ordinance doesn't apply to the city manominee or any of the seven incorporated villages that we have scattered around the county. There's a lot of information in the ordinance. I don't intend to touch on all that tonight. I'm just going to give you a very high level summary of it. But basically, all newly created parcels in the county, which are less than 20 acres, require compliance with the land division ordinance. You can create a maximum of four lots smaller than 20 acres from each quarter, quarter or government lot within your tract or property within a five-year period through the certified survey map process. If you want to exceed that number and provided zoning allows for it and you're not in a general egg zoning classification where there's density-based requirements, additional lots above and beyond four in a five-year period could be created through the plating process, either a state or a county plat. So types of land divisions reviewed by my office include certified survey maps, condominium subdivision plots. So CSMs and condo plots are reviewed and approved internally just by county staff. County and state subdivision plots are still reviewed by staff, but they need additional approval by the county planning resources and development committee. And then if you're doing a state subdivision plat, they also require approval by the state Department of Administration plat review. Sometimes other departments or other agencies get involved in the land division review process. So talking county departments, the Register of Deeds gets involved from time to time, our land information office, real property listers office, the highway department. And then outside agencies would be the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the DNR and plat review down in Madison. So what do we review for? Several things, certainly compliance with all county ordinances, state statutes, and then Chapter 87 of Wisconsin Administrative Code, which is titled Minimum Standards for Property Surveys. I'll just briefly mention that a lot of our, not a lot, but several of our towns in the county also have their own standalone land division ordinances. So and the misconception is that we're we're reviewing these maps for town standards and and we are not. So the towns do their own review for compliance with their own standards. So as we're reviewing these maps, we have a checklist. I just have the first two pages up here, but the checklist is actually five pages long. It's very important that we use a checklist so we don't overlook anything. Another good reason is so we treat it all the submittals fairly and objectively. So they're all going through the same same measure of standards. So so we charge a fee for that review. And it varies depending on what you're doing, how many lots you're created. I don't intend to go through the whole fee schedule. It is up on the screen in front of you here. I will say our average annual income that we take in from reviewing land divisions is anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 a year, depending on the year. So in 2021, we increased our fees. So we saw, you know, significant jump in in revenue. The few years before that, we're around 14 to 20,000. Once we increased our fees in 2021, we've consistently been bringing in now over 20,000 and as much as to just under 30,000. All that money, by the way, goes right into the the general fund. So now I'm going to just go through some examples for those of you that aren't aren't aware of what some of these types of maps are. But what we have on the screen here is a is actually a state subdivision plat. It's called Adella Ridge. It's in the town of Manominee, just west of town here. Created about, I think, 27 or 20, 27 or 28 lots. Second page is certificates, but both both sheets need to be reviewed. These subdivision plots can take a considerable amount of time to review. All the lots have to be checked to make sure the perimeter boundaries closed, the areas are right. We don't want something getting to the real property lister's office that has errors in it. This is a certified survey map. It's a very simple certified survey map. Somebody is just carving a piece of land out of a larger larger tractor property. Then we can also have very complicated certified survey maps. This one here, it's it's, there's a lot going on, right? We've got floodplain. We've got there's just a lot of things. The town required a bunch of notes. There's a bunch of easements on it. We're along. We have a water boundary on one side. So maps can get very complicated. Sometimes they take an hour to review. Sometimes it can take three hours, depending on the map. These are certified survey maps. Again, they can be used for a lot of different purposes. I'm sorry. So they can be used for a lot of different purposes, not just creating a new parcel. So if you look at the map on the left, we actually have three platted lots there on a subdivision plat that one person bought all three lots. They just simply want to combine them into one new parcel. So the proper way to do that would be with a certified survey map. On the right, we have two certified survey map lots that somebody wants to combine. So CSMs are, that is the proper vehicle or way to do that. So and those all get reviewed by my office. Just some statistics here. So you can see the number of parcels that have been created in the county by certified survey map and plat. I I will say plats are kind of a rare thing. It's been a while since we've had one. I don't think we've ever had two in one year. They're kind of few and far between. But anyway, these are the number of parcels that were created in the last five years. And then the number of certified survey maps, I think, is something, you know, we need to speak towards as well. We've been doing roughly 100 a year certified survey maps. We had 103 back in 2021. The five-year average has been 83. And right now, this year, we're definitely on track to hit 100, if not more. So it's been a very busy year. And then the last slide I have up here for you is just some statistics on the the 22 towns that we have. So for 2023, you can see the number of parcels that were created in each town, the resulting acreage, and then I just, I did the top three. So Red Cedar. So if we look at number of parcels created, Red Cedar led the pack, and then Dunn and Springbrook were second and third, tied for second, I guess, with 10 apiece. If we look at just acreage alone, of course, Red Cedar is out front at at over 100 acres. That was divided off. And then New Haven and Otter Creek followed that. So I know it was a very quick overview on the land division review process, but it's it's a large part of what I do, my daily duties. So and I'd be happy to answer any more questions once Anne gets through with with her portion of the report. So I'll turn it over to her at this point.
So Dan's going to have to set mine up separately. Okay, I hope this works. So I'm Anne Wadarchek. I'm the Planner Zoning Administrator for Dunn County. I oversee two divisions, the Land Use Control Division and the Planning Division. So combined, we refer to them as the Zoning Office. The Land Use Control Division oversees the implementation and enforcement of zoning ordinances. We review subdivision plats and CSMs that Tom works on. We also review and approve zoning, sanitary, shoreline and floodplain permits. We conduct site inspections for these permits and we ensure compliance with zoning regulations. We also handle variances, conditional use permits, rezoning requests, and as I said before, we review land division applications. In the Planning Division, we're responsible for long-range planning, which includes developing and updating plans that guide the county's growth and development. The two major plans for this are the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This guides all development for Dunn County as a whole. It takes into account town plans and other more smaller scale plans. We also work with the Farmland Preservation Plan. We do a lot of work with the Land and Water Conservation Division for that. And we have a lot more there on our planning webpage, so I won't bore you with those if you'd like to take a look. Our team. So as I mentioned, I'm Anne. I lead the team. We have three code enforcement officers and planners, Michelle, Tracy and Tammy. We did not have a program assistant in 2023, but we are hiring right now. So if anyone is interested or knows anyone who would be, I'm just going to shamelessly plug that. We also have a seasonal zoning specialist in our office, Jackie. She works the summer months and helps us with permitting and office coverage. And then we have a senior planner position that is vacant and unfunded for 2023. So I just wanted to pick one of the programs that we work on, and I did end up picking the largest one, which is zoning. I figured with tonight's agenda, having a lot of zoning items, I would have a captive audience that I could speak to. So in an attempt to speak to you in non-zoning language and jargon, I'm going to try to not mention any specific ordinance codes or state statutes, and I'm just going to keep it as basic as I possibly can. So what is zoning? Zoning is used by local governments to regulate land use. It divides land into different zones and districts, each with specific permitted uses, regulations and restrictions. This is intended to manage growth, protect natural resources and ensure compatibility between different land uses. The zoning districts in Dunn County can be summarized as residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial and specialized. The specialized ones would be the conservation and shoreline recreational districts, and the others, I think, kind of speak for themselves. Our ag districts are intensive, primary and general. Intensive and primary are very similar. They allow for tax incentives for farmers who are part of the farmland preservation program. And then general ag is is still agricultural uses, but it does allow for a little more business and a little more residential use as well. Residential districts, we have R1, R2 and R3. Single family is residential one. That's the main intent of that zoning district. Residential 2 is designed for single and two-family or duplexes. R3 is going to be more increased density. So we have single family, two-family and multifamily. So how is zoning established? So we start with comprehensive planning. We prepare a comprehensive land use plan. This usually kind of goes before or at the same time as we establish zoning. It provides a framework for zoning decision and helps inform the development of zoning regulations that reflect the community's values, priorities and aspirations. We next look at planning maps. So we create maps. We work with the town and we work with other municipalities to get plans for future development, and we also map the existing land uses. We then analyze each parcel. So each parcel of property within the county that we're responsible for, we will look at the size, location, land uses on that property and the surrounding properties, the topography and their access to infrastructure. So next, we'll start designating each parcel with a zoning designation. So we work with the towns also. Typically, the towns will establish which parcels get what zoning designation. They'll work with our office to understand what uses are allowed in those zoning areas. And for example, a parcel might be designated as residential, commercial, ag or another zoning category. We next have public hearings and workshops. We use these to gather input from residents, property owners, businesses, other stakeholders, developers. This can ensure that the zoning maps and regulations will reflect the community's needs and preferences. So the final step is adoption. Technically, there's a lot of work that happens after that, and most of it goes on in my office or at PR and D or at this meeting. So we have the adoption of the map and the ordinance. So once these maps have been finalized, they're presented to the Board of Supervisors, which is you. There is a formal vote to approve the zoning map and the ordinances, and then they become the county's official zoning, official zoning regulations. After the adoption, the county zoning administrator, me, is responsible for administering and enforcing the zoning regulations. This includes reviewing development proposals, issuing permits, conducting inspections and addressing any violations of the zoning ordinance. From there, these regulations are periodically reviewed and updated. A lot of times this work is done with the PR and D committee. We also get public input that kind of shapes some of these decisions and when they're brought to PR and D. And we just try to make sure that they are effective and we respond to changing community needs, land use trends and legal requirements. All right, I didn't quote any ordinances. So my goal is done. Thank you very much for listening. Go back to you.
Yes, that concludes our report. I guess we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. I already see Mr. B, Larry Bjork over there with his mic on. So yeah, go ahead.
Superintendent Larry Bjork.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you know, I was sitting to listen to your presentation and we look at all the different things that county government does. And, you know, I look at things that county government does in the rural parts of the county. And you guys are pretty active and from always what I hear, do a pretty good job. So I commend you for, you know, taking care of the rural area. And somebody mentioned sanitation up there, and I'm sure they beat it to death on these additional units. So and then there was somebody says, wow, septic's going to go right into the creeks. You guys must have to approve anything that would done with adding additional residents to to an area.
Yeah, so anytime that an additional residence is built, if there's already an existing, say, private septic system, there will be a permit required to connect there will be a permit required to connect that new house to the existing system. We will do an inspection and work with plumbers to make sure that that system is sized appropriately to take on the new load that's being put into the system. So there, there's a lot of requirements on like the state level as far as how many bedrooms require how many square feet of absorption fields and things like that. Anyway, I'm not gonna get into that because I am not the most knowledgeable person on septic systems, but we would be responsible for that. Those permits go through our office.
I just know a local plumber in the county thinks you guys are great.
I think I know which one that might be.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. Oh, I guess the other thing was, if they're adding a, a structure and there's a mound system on the, the existing property, would a conventional system be considered for the new structure because of one or two people? Or would it automatically go into a mound system, do you think?
I feel like we should have the person you know speak. So if, if the system that exists isn't large enough to accommodate the new number of bedrooms in the next extra unit, they could build another completely separate septic system that would just function on its own. Or they could look to modify that existing system so that it could, you know, it could accommodate that. So it'd be kind of a call between the plumber, the property owner, and as long as it's meeting the rules, we will accept it.
Thank you for economic develop.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, could, I do have a Google machine, but could you, would you mind explaining the difference between a survey map and a plat, please?
Okay, certified survey map and a plat. Okay, so certified survey maps have certain standards. They have to be on eight and a half legal size sheet of paper. You can do up to a maximum of four parcels on a certified survey map. Certified survey maps get reviewed and approved just by, by county staff and myself. They don't come through any county committees. They're typically done when you're creating a new parcel. If you have 40 acres of land and you just want your four corners set, you're not gonna have a certified survey map done on that. That would be, you would have a survey done, but you'd still get a survey map. It would be called a map of survey. So there's really three kinds of maps. We have subdivision plats, certified survey maps, and maps of survey. So I'm, I hope I'm answering your question, but if you're creating a new parcel, you could do it through the certified survey map process if you meet certain requirements. You don't exceed more than four parcels, four new parcels in a, in a 40 and a five-year period. Creating new parcels. If you're doing just a retracement or need one 40-corner set or just need a line survey, so you can put up a fence, you're gonna have a map of survey done. So certified survey maps get reviewed and approved by the county. And then once that happens, they get recorded at the Register of Deeds office. If you have one of your 40 corners set and your surveyor does a map of survey, they aren't gonna record that map of survey at the Register of Deeds. But within 60 days, under Wisconsin Administrative Code, they're required to file that map with my office, so it is on public record. So maps of survey are still certified maps. The surveyor puts a stamp on there, signs and dates that has a certificate on there saying that the survey is true and correct to the best of their knowledge and belief. It's just where that survey gets deposited or stored at the county. So maps of survey are in my office, available to the public upon demand. Certified survey maps get recorded at the Register of Deeds office. If we're gonna start creating a whole bunch of lots, we're gonna exceed four lots in a five-year period, and the zoning allows for it, then we can do, or required to do a plat, either a county plat or a state plat. Those maps, those plaits are reviewed in-house and then go through the PR&amp;D committee. When they're all done and approved, sometimes they need state approval too. If it's a state plat, then they get recorded at the Register of Deeds office. So CSMs and plaits get recorded at ROD. Maps of survey get filed in my office. Did I answer your question?
You didn't. Thank you. I, you had the last section on that one slide that said, in addition to the four parcels, I think you said, then there, there could be a plating process.
Additional lots, if you want to exceed four. Say I have 40 acres. Zoning allows me, I'm, I'm, say I'm in an unzoned township and I have 40 acres and I wanna put 13 lots out there. I can't, I could do it with a certified survey map, but I would have to phase it in over five-year increments. The first five years, I could do four with a CSM, then I'd have to wait. And after five years elapsed, I could do, I could keep doing lots in five-year increments. But if I'm a developer and I wanna put all 13 lots there right now, I would have to go through the planning process.
I see. Thank you.
Yep. Rosa Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a question about the ADUs. I think out in the country, I don't see where there's much of a problem when there's plenty of land and stuff. But where I'm at, on Tainer, I've had people talk to me with concerns about how close houses are together and stuff. And I, I'm wondering, is there some type, will there be, is there some type of regulation or stipulation on what size lots you need to put one or how much square footage? I'm very happy to hear that, which I guess I already knew that sewer systems had to be up to size and everything like that. But I'm wondering on lots, are people gonna be able to? I mean, cause on Tainer, they're obviously pretty close. Is there a certain size that that lot has to be to add a certain sized ADU?
So right now, as the amendment is being proposed, there are standards for most of these things, but there is not a minimum lot size standard. Maybe PR&amp;D committee members would like to speak to this as well, but I believe that the reasoning was that they still need enough room to accommodate a properly sized septic system. They'll still need to meet all setbacks, so there's side setbacks, lake, lake property setbacks. There's roadway setbacks. There's a lot of limiting factors that are already coming into play that would probably not work for a lot of these smaller lots. But that, to be clear, there is no current standard right now for establishing minimum lot size for an ADU.
Well, you need so much area for absorption too, right? So I mean, there's that, and I can't think of what the word is, but there can only be so much rough space or, what's the word I'm trying to say?
Impervious surface?
Yes, exactly. So.
Yep. So that'd be another thing. There's shoreline zoning ordinances that would come into play along Tainer. And those are a lot more restrictive. We're gonna have to calculate impervious surfaces. So any structure that rain would fall on and would wash off, I understand that you probably know this, but just so everyone understands, anything that would cause rainwater to not permeate the ground is considered an impervious surface. And we have regulations for that. You have to keep it under a certain, certain percentage of the property, the lot itself. If you go over that, we do have some options for mitigation for storm water, like rain gardens and swales and things like that. But that, again, that's gonna be another really limiting one for those shoreline properties. I, I guess I try to think of it with the ADUs as they are like, every rule that applies to a home that we already have would apply to the ADUs. Plus, ADUs have additional standards that are being proposed right now.
And that's what I figured, and I appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Quinn.
Yeah, I was explaining that, but just, Justin, just to note that the committee did not include residential one, which are, most of the lots around Tainer Lake are residential one as part of the ordinance, so they will not be allowed in that area for the very reasons you talked about.
I could add one more thing about that too, I suppose, if that's all right.
Yep.
So some of these lots too are in this shoreline zone, shoreline recreation zoning district as well. And currently, we don't have a provision for ADUs to be in those zoning districts.
Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, for groundwater, back in 2022, when I first started, I know there was a farm retaining pond that was leaking that the county was working with to get through. I was wondering, I can't remember an update on that. Has that all been resolved? Is that all good now?
So yes, we, we work with a number of farms on their waste storage or manure storage facilities. I think that's what you mean by the retaining pond. In the county manager's report today for expenses over $40,000, there was a line item there. That was for that particular project. We've, we've come to resolution on that, and that is a functioning system right now. Still some other work that we're working with a landowner on, but yeah. And generally speaking, that, that large expense and that large infrastructure improvement is, is been achieved, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, I saw that and figured that was the same project, but wasn't quite sure. So that's good to hear. That is working pretty good.
Yep.
Nice recall Supervisor Hagan. Anyone else? Looks like not. You are all off the hook for the moment. Thank you. Very nicely done. Department, Katie.
All right, good evening. So this is gonna be a repeat for some folks, but I always like to start things off with a show of hands for who has used the Health Department services in the last year. Oh, thank you guys so much. All right, so we'll change, we'll ask again at the end of the presentation and see if anything's changed. All right. So a little bit about me, I've been in my role here in Dunn County for six years. I have worked in governmental public health for 20. Oh, I'm old. And I do have undergraduate in environmental health, so I'm gonna speak about that portion of the, the Health Department and what we do. It is near and dear to my own heart. And of course, I have a master's degree from the U of M, but don't hold that against me. So again, we're only talking about one small portion of what public health is. So what you have in front of you are foundational public health services. You can see that we do a lot. When we look at the National Public Health Accreditation Board, or FAB, I think they did that on purpose. You can see that we've got roles in communicable disease follow-up. We have roles in chronic disease and injury prevention, environmental public health, what we're talking about today, maternal-child health, and access to care and linkages. We also do work in emergency preparedness and other public health business as well. But today, we're gonna talk to something, again, like I said, near and dear to my heart, environmental health. And I tried to find one of those, those memes, you know, what my mom thinks I do, what my coworkers think I do. I couldn't find it, but I did find some pictures that all very much to me speak to, you guys can't see them yet, speak to environmental health. So everything on here sums up environmental health, or the things in the environment that can make people sick. This isn't about keeping the environment healthy. This is about keeping people healthy from things in the environment that can make them sick. So it's the science and practice of identifying, evaluating, eliminating the things in the environment that make people sick. This discipline is heavy science. And so when I did my undergraduate, it is pre-med, pre-vet, pre-nursing. I did a lot of science. Didn't do a lot of public speaking. I'm getting better. So when you look up here, you see things like city, smog, noise. You can see the environmental health aspects to that because you've got air quality impacts, noise impacts, density impacts, all known to either impact long-term chronic health, things like COPD, asthma, as well as high blood pressure. And then when you look at that bathroom, that lovely bathroom up there, so much of environmental health is keeping the poop away from the people, not gonna lie. So when we think about sinks and toilets, that is basic environmental health, keeping people sick or keeping people from getting sick. When we think about those creepy crawlies up there, I could tell you that the animal most at risk at killing you in parts of the world is a mosquito. malaria kills more people. It is mosquito-borne than any other vector-borne disease. Thank goodness, we have lovely winters and those types of mosquitoes don't grow here. And then you see that beautiful, beautiful, beautiful buffet. What I see is temperature abuse. It's gonna make people sick because has that been out for more than four hours? Who has been touching that? Whose toddler has been tasting and putting that back? I've seen it during inspection. Oh my gosh, I don't eat at buffet. They're lovely. I don't eat at them. And then looking at that gorgeous glass of milk. How many of you guys remember the foodborne illness that happened in a regional county associated with raw milk being served at a sports function? Uh huh. So very many people were sick, and it had to do with unpasteurized milk. Again, environmental health. Anybody that has been on the lakes in the deep summer will recognize that next picture, harmful algal blooms. So that is a result of nutrients and water. And we do have illness associated with that here in Dunn County. We have lost, since I've been here, a dog every other year that we know about because of algal toxins and ingestion. These are all things in the environment that make people sick. What does our department do associated with that? So let me dive a little bit deeper. We have a radon program, and we are the Regional Information Center, or RIC, because we love our acronyms, for five, five counties, us, St. Roy, Pierce, Barron, and Sawyer. Cause somebody had, I, I don't know. It's just a lovely drive. I have no idea. We also follow up on lead. So your primary route of exposure to lead is through paint because lead-based paint was outlawed in 1978. Much of our housing stock is pre-1978. Our water is strong. We don't have traditional exposures through water. Lead and elevated blood lead is most likely to come from housing exposures. We follow up on lead in children. Littles get their fingers poked and they take readings to see what their lead is in their body. There is no safe exposure to lead. However, if they have a reading of over five milliliters per deciliter, we do a follow-up. And then we do that with environmental health, with a site visit, and then also a public health nurse. Rabies and zoonosis. So I love this picture. Aren't bats just the cutest? So all three, sorry, four, counting's hard, of those types of animals can transmit rabies. Most typical variant here is bat, but we can also have it skunks, in-skunks, raccoons, and fox. And basically, any mammal can get rabies and transmit rabies. When I was at CSU, the vet school there had a necropsy of a buffalo that they'd had no idea was rabid. And all those exposures to all those poor little vet students, you can have rabies quite a bit. And so that's why we follow up with dog bites, we follow up with bat bites, bear bites. That happens in our environmental health. And then human health hazards. When we think about that, we think of folks that are living in a hoarded house. We are thinking about people that live without water, sewer, electricity. We follow up with that. We get involved. We also get them connected to other services because oftentimes it is a manifestation of a mental health issue, not necessarily a choice to live that way. All right, this is the interactive part of today's. Everybody who has a cell phone, would you open up your cell phone and open up that QR code? Got it? Anybody able to connect? So this takes you to our database of restaurant inspections. So the Health Department, our environmental health specialists, do restaurant inspections. They do pool inspections, they do hotel inspections. And you can find each and every one of them on this database with some caveats. They are only regular inspections and re-inspections. What you don't have are foodborne illness complaints, and you don't have all the other complaints. We do follow up on those complaints, so if it's a disgruntled employee or somebody that got sick after eating there, we visit with them. But many people call and say, what, you know, where would you expect me to eat? Where, where should I eat in, in Dunn County? Now, I can tell you, look it up. Go look at your favorite restaurants. See how they do. Recognize that anybody can have a bad day. Anybody can have a bad day. But if they have a series of inspections that are really not good, they have poor adherence to public health safety, you may not want to eat there. Or if you know the owner, you might wanna talk to them about that because you can choose with your pocketbook, but then also with your neighbors. And so I think that that's really important for folks to know that our inspectors follow up and do inspections in all 255 of our retail licensed food facilities. That includes 100 retail markets, so that's everything from farmer's markets to grocery stores. And then the establishments that serve meals, so that's everything from push carts to restaurants. We inspect each and every one of them every year. What else do we inspect in environmental health? What else can make us sick? Body art. You guys might understand that if you get a tat- Body art. You guys might understand that if you get attached to, you're using a sharp thing and you're poking somebody's body with it. So you have bloodborne pathogens and other things that can make people sick. You can take bacteria from the outside of the body and put it inside the body where it can grow up, make people sick. So of course, we regulate that. We do inspections annually. Lodging facilities, so that's things like hotels and motels. Pools, if anybody's ever been in a whirlpool, you can tell it's nice and warm, humid, and gross things grow in there. So we can, we do inspections, they're licensed facilities. Recreational education camps and campgrounds. And then just as a kind of put some numbers around that, we did in 2023, we did 45 inspections for new businesses, getting started to making sure they are started on the right foot. We consult with them to set them up for success. And then in 2024, we've done 15 as of June of those pre-inspections. Total licensing inspections in 2023, we did 509. And then in 2024, we did 173. The reason I'm giving you those numbers is because our licensing year is super helpful, July to June. Doesn't go with anything else, doesn't even go with my budget or along those lines. So just kind of keep an idea of the, the volume of environmental health inspections that we do. And then finally, I wanted to share our environmental health folks. We have this gorgeous shiny new water lab. We have been certified by the Department of Ag to get that up and going. We are waiting for access to their data management system. And we're very shortly going to start taking water samples for transient non-community water, so TNCs. And so that's our licensed facilities, like, so we have to have 25 people or more for 60 days or more, and that can look like bars, that can look like libraries, that can look like B&amp;Bs, those types of things. And they're licensed through us. They have to have their water sampled every year. This is an easy way for us to do it in-house and not have a cost incurred to do that. Eventually, hopefully in the next three months or so, we're going to open that up to the public as well. So they can still continue to use other resources like CTL or the State Lab of Hygiene or the Eau Claire City County Health Department. But if they wanted to do that in their own backyard, they can do it at our lab as well. So just as far as numbers go, we have delegated wells, so these are private wells. We work with about 140 new wells a year. We do inspections and we make sure that they're installed properly. TNCs, I already talked to you guys about that. We have about 81 TNCs that we not only inspect annually, but do a site sample. And then, like I said, that lab, it was put together with support from the Public Health ARPA dollars. So we had specific dollars for public health in the scope of work was specifically about water infrastructure. And so as we look to supporting folks making informed decisions about their own well water, this is one way you could do that. And that's one of the reasons we used our Public Health ARPA dollars that way. All right. I don't know how I did on time, but I don't think I'm running too late.
Not bad.
If you have questions or concerns, you can reach out to me directly. Happy to talk through that. Or anything in the written report that you had in your packet, all 14 pages, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Hagan.
For environmental health, before I was a supervisor, I worked for film and television. And I worked on a few episodes of Hoarders. So I really want to appreciate the environmental health service of counties. There's been some things seen.
Well, there we go.
I was going to say thank you guys. And hope the rest of your night goes quick.
Thank you, Katie. That was, that was lovely. Okay, the next area is the reports, resolutions, ordinances. In the interest of getting a few more of our guests out of here, out of courtesy, without objection, I would like to move item 11B3, Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Accessory Dwelling Units, up in front of 10A, just to, you know, get a few of you, more, a few more of you out the door without having to drag through the whole rest of the meeting. So without objection, seeing none. All right. 11B3, Comprehensive Zone Ordinance Amendment.
I'd like to make a motion. And this is what I got from Nick. So a motion to refer back to committee zoning ordinance ADU. I move to refer this ordinance back to Planning, Resource and Development Committee for further discussion and consideration of adding language that would make ADUs a special exception. Do you get a second and then you tell wire?
It would be, that's an appropriate motion at this time.
Okay.
So that would need a second. Supervisor will see seconds. Is there any speaking to the motion to move this back to the appropriate committee, PR and D? Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you. As written now, it leaves towns with little township input into it. And there was a survey done about parallel authority, which is similar to special exceptions. And it was six to one in favor of it that the townships filled out. And there are just too many cases that if the ADUs were automatically permitted, there's some situations where it can be very dangerous. Say if a person had a dangerous driveway and you add an ADU to it, but the driveway was grandfathered in, and you add more traffic to that driveway, does that make that driveway more safer? So there's got to be a little control of where they go. And I don't, and I think that the most important people that would understand that would be the township. And have them completely left out of the decision-making isn't quite right. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Morehouse.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will speak in opposition to this. The Planning, Resources and Development Committee has been reviewing this ordinance and the ramifications of it literally for months. And let me remind you that the PR and D committee meets twice a month. We have listened to lots and lots and lots of testimony from people, and some of them, God love them, are with us just about every meeting and they're still here tonight. I, I think this issue has been discussed thoroughly. I think the standards that are attached to the ordinance amendment are appropriate, well-considered, and well-done. I see absolutely no reason whatever that this needs to be remanded to PR and D.
Thank you Supervisor Morehouse. Anyone else? All right. Oh, Supervisor Quinn.
Well, I just echo what Supervisor Morehouse said. I think, I absolutely understand the motivation to consider the, to reconsider elements. We reconsidered so many elements on this and changed so many things. This ordinance as it is was, you know, was a, it was a, there are many elements, parts of it that were compromised with people on the committee. But we do think that it is, it represents the best interest of the county, of the residents of the county. As it is, if we, it is remanded back, we of course will, will look at it and, and do our best to address the concerns. That's Supervisor Bjork has. But we would really, this is the first reading, we would really like to proceed with the ordinance as written.
Thank you Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Barrier.
Yes, I'm also on the PR and D committee, and I am in agreement with Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Morehouse. I think that we need to vote on it here.
Supervisor Getson.
Well, I've been reached out to by my local township and they also have spoken here tonight and they're looking for the parallel kind of regulatory authority and stuff like that, so.
Thank you Supervisor Getson. Anyone else? Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question because I, I'm not quite sure how the, the building process works. So if someone's building a new structure, do they get the permit from the county to build? And so this would be different or this would be the same process to get an ADU? I'm not sure. I'm just asking. I don't know.
Supervisor Morehouse, do you have, you look like you wanted to answer that.
Well, no. Are we speaking to the amendment or are we speaking to the ordinance?
Currently, we're still speaking to whether or not to send back to PR and D. It's not an amendment, it's a, it's a motion to, to return to committee.
That's what I meant.
Well, no, but it's just.
Or what is a special exception? Maybe I need clarification on that.
Supervisor Quinn.
I think if I can, if I can give.
Is somebody back there, you know, Anne, do you want to?
And you want to, maybe Anne can address the specific question Anne asked.
You missed your chance to escape.
So who was the person, you asked the question? So I believe the question was, what is a special exception permit? And also, what would the permitting process look like for ADUs? Is that right? Okay. So right now, as the ordinance amendment is proposed, to get an ADU, you would get a zoning permit from the zoning office. So that would involve exactly the same steps as building a brand-new house. So you would have to show, you would have to get a permit for your septic system waste disposal from our office. The zoning permit would make sure that you're, you know, it would look at the setbacks required for your property, whether ADUs are actually allowed on that zoning district for that property. All those basic things would be looked at. So that's how it is now. A special exception is really just, there's certain things that are considered special exceptions or also known as conditional uses. So these are listed in the zoning ordinance under each zoning district. How can I explain it? So special exceptions are generally just things that wouldn't normally be allowed on that property through just a regular zoning permit. But with certain conditions and the right situation, the board of adjustment could approve that use. So really common ones are like wedding barns, agricultural entertainment. So, you know, they're not just allowed for everybody who's in the general ag zoning district, but if you can meet certain standards and the board feels that this would be an appropriate use on your property, they can approve it. And they can also create additional standards, address parking or screening or anything that they would be concerned about that would affect the general public's health, safety and welfare. So if the ADUs were moved to a special exception, we would have to decide, or you would have to decide where these special exceptions could be and which zoning districts, and if there would be any standards applied to them. Just to be clear, as it's written now, it would require a zoning permit, but there is a pretty extensive list of standards to issue that zoning permit. And I, this is included in the packet, right? Okay. So I won't have to go over those.
Probably worth hanging out for a minute or two. Supervisor Kinnear.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Anne, just to make sure everybody knows, could you explain the difference between a permitted use versus a special exception? I know you explained special exceptions, but just contrast them, please.
Yeah. So this is something I wish that I would have included in my report today. So we have what we call permitted uses, accessory uses, and special exceptions, AKA conditional uses. So a permitted use is something that's considered a by-right use of that property. So in a general agriculture zoning district, crop farming is considered a, you know, permitted use. This is something that this zoning designation was kind of made for. These are the things that we envision these properties being used for. Other permitted uses are single-family home. Then you come down into accessory uses, and those are things that you would be doing in addition to those permitted uses. So a common one would be, God, I can't even think of any off the top of my head, but it's something that it makes sense with that zoning district, but it's not the main use of the property. These permitted uses are the main use of the property. An accessory are next. So those are done through zoning permits. When we come down to special exceptions or conditional uses, these are things that are not generally allowed. They're, they don't always make sense for every property. We don't see them as, you know, being approved as a zoning permit. They just require additional review. So the town would look at these applications for special exception and they would be able to say, we don't really see this making sense here. You know, it seems like there'd be a conflict with traffic or it would put an extra burden on our roads, things like that. So they could submit that opinion to our board of adjustment. And they could make a recommendation to deny the permit, or they could make a recommendation to allow it. Once it goes to the board of adjustment, there's a public hearing. The board will hear from the applicant, they'll hear from our office and our opinions on how this would work. They'd take the town's opinion into account, things like that. And then they could also apply additional conditions just specific for that person and that property. And keep in mind, a special exception or conditional use, if it's approved there, it can go with the land. So future property owners could possibly use that as long as they stick to those standards and they follow all the rules and they keep using it in that way, they can keep doing that. So if an ADU was a special exception or a conditional use, the next person who buys the property could keep using that ADU. But if they were ever found to be out of compliance or violating any rules, we could technically take that away. And that would involve another public hearing. This can also happen with zoning permits.
Thank you, Anne. Is that? Supervisor Quinn.
So Anne, is there a cost to requesting a special exception by a landowner?
Yeah, good thing to bring up. So a typical zoning permit can run anywhere from $140 to upwards of 200, depending on where the property is. A conditional use or a special exception will cost $800 for the application. And that $800 is not refundable. If you get denied at the public hearing, that money goes back to our office and it pays for the public hearing and all the notification requirements.
Thank you. I just say that I think one reason why we, so just to put a context on this, because I, one reason why the committee did not make this a special exception was because of, well, our goal was, was to provide a clear and effective opportunity for landowners to, to do something they want to, with their property that will improve their lives without having to go through what are, you know, excessive expenses or time commitments. The other problem with a special exception is that depending on how it's structured, and we could, we could look at this, but depending on how structured right now, it can end up being a pretty long process. I mean, the, the back and, certain standards are applied, but that, but one board doesn't accept them, then it goes back. And you could end up making the simple application to do an ADU could end up becoming a very complicated and not very effective process and sort of defeat the, the purpose. The other thing I would say is that, for example, in general agriculture, some people in general agriculture already have the right to do accessory dwelling units. And that's those folks who are engaged in farming. If you're engaged in farming and you have over $6,000 in income in, from agriculture, then you can do an ADU. So we're sort of providing the other residents of those districts an opportunity to do that in the same way that, in the same sort of process that we, that we provide for the farming community. It's not an easy topic. It's why we spent five months talking about it. But that's why we, we think that the standard, the ordinance as it's written does address the goals of the, of what the county wants to see. And, and I really personally do not think it will be a problem for towns. We are not going to see a deluge of these things. The counties that have set them up already, I think Pierce County has it, and other others, but there's several others in our area. And they have seen some, but not very many of them. And I don't think any problems that we know of, so. Anyway, that's our argument, but.
Thank you Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Wolf.
Yes, thank you. Just listening to the people from the townships that were here, it sounds like the main thing they're asking for is the possibility of being equal in the, in the application. And I don't know if that is something that is something to make in the amendment or if that is something to, as they go to the hearing, she was just mentioning at, at the hearing, they can stand up and say, yes, we're all right with it or, or no, it doesn't look good to us. Is there just a little bit of follow up to that, please?
Did you want, did you want Supervisor Quinn as chair of the committee or did you want Anne as?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just, it seems that the townships like said they were wanting to possibly have a little input in it. And is that included in what you've brought up? Or is that something that, that they're being left out of at this point? Well, thank you.
You know, in the process of developing this ordinance, we really, and I think that the towns we worked with would have to, would have to agree with this. We really made an effort to include their concerns. And that's why, for example, we started off with it being, including all residential one district and we took that out as a compromise because we heard back from towns that we just, they just didn't want that. That was not, for very good reasons. That was going to cause some problems. We did ask for a general opinion from the towns as to whether or not it was a, general agriculture, for example, was an acceptable area. And, and, and I think, I don't think anyone thought that was not an acceptable area. But the, the question of providing special exception authority, especially the idea of providing some kind of parallel special exception authority came, that idea kind of got brought forward after we had decided that we didn't want normal special exception authority in there. And, and after we had, it had been formally approved to send it to the board. So that was unfortunately a discussion that we, that we had not had as a committee. I think we, I don't know. I mean, it's, we think it's a good ordinance the way it's written. There will, though, I know there are town board members who are concerned about it. I can't say that, I, I can't put myself in their shoes and agree with them, but I, you know, we'll just, we'll do our job, whatever it is.
Thank you Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did not attend all the PR and D meetings. But I have looked at YouTube and there are hours and hours and hours of them over the last five months, which I also have not watched all of them, to be clear. And there was a public hearing and there was a lot of deliberation and it passed through the committee and came back, came to this board. And so I am in opposition of sending it back to the committee because the committee is still made up of the same people. They have considered the safety of driveways. They've considered everything at this point. And so I think we should move forward with it. I don't see how anything different would come back out of the committee.
Thank you Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Burnt.
So I guess I'm sort of also in the ignorant area of the spectrum. Would those exceptions or however it works, have to still come to this board to be approved or? Okay, that answers that question.
Supervisor Morehouse than Supervisor Gary Bjork. We're starting to get into the people taking the second bite at the apple, so I'm just having to keep closer track.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for speaking twice, but I, I will remind this committee and ADUs are, ADUs are only a partial solution to a significant crisis that we have in this county. We need 3,000 housing units by 2040. That was a housing study that was done, supported by grant funds, that identified what the issues are. And among those issues are significant lack of housing for older people. And I don't know about you, but I'm getting older and there are absolutely no places available for people that are accessible, environmentally friendly, single story, et cetera. ADUs will help to solve part of that process. And the harder we make it, the more steps that people have to go through to get an ADU, the less likely they are to help us solve a problem. Now, I guess we can decide not to solve the problem. We can send it back to committee and we could keep talking about it for a couple of more years. But the problem remains and the problem will be unsolved. And that's up to us.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being involved in large modern ag, I find it not hypocritical, but they were in total support of local control of large modern ag, which is highly regulated by the state, but they still want a local control. But now when it comes to ADUs, they want like no local control at all. You know, it can go wherever it wants. And there is some spots that are not really applicable for ADUs. But if the people that live there are voted by their, their neighbors, they should be able to have some kind of say to it. And a special exception isn't denying it. It just makes sure that it's done right. And this is not a time sensitive issue, but it is an issue that we should get right. And I, I just think it's a part of being fairness. If, like one group should have to have local control, but the other one, no, no, don't even get close to local control. Let it go like this Wild West, so I'll be quiet. I think I made enough friends.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. From what I've heard, R1 areas are completely out on this 100%. And from what I gather with the special exemptions, exceptions, is that most of those from what I've been taking notes have been coming from areas that would fall into that R1. And so between R1 being not included and with the current regulations to build an ADU as it stands, I don't see a problem with the language as it is as written.
Thank you Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Steen.
I call a question.
That's a motion.
It implicates a motion to end debate. However, if there is no objection to Supervisor Steen's suggestion, it may be interpreted by the chair as unanimous consent. And you can move to vote. So you can just move on to vote.
Does anyone object to Supervisor Steen's motion? All right, we're going to go ahead and vote on the motion to return to committee. I'm going to try this with a voice vote. If it's un, if the answer is unclear, we'll probably need to do this as a, as a roll call. Yes? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I really think the interest of the public.
Roll call?
Roll call.
You are absolutely entitled to, to ask for a roll call vote and that answers that question.
So this vote will be on the motion to refer back to the Planning Resource Development Committee for further discussion and consideration to make accessory dwelling units a special exception. Moved by Supervisor Gary Bjork and seconded by Supervisor Willsey. So we're just voting on the motion to refer back to the planning commission at this time.
A no keeps it here. A yes moves it back.
Okay, I am going to.
If you vote yes, you are voting to move it back to committee. If you vote no, you are voting to keep it here on the floor where we would then move to the next step. I just want to be very clear with, what a yes and what a no means because it's, it's a little bit unclear in this particular circumstance.
Okay, so if you tap the center of your screen to activate it, you should see the voting options. Can't put it on that one. I can only put it on this one. Sorry, the center one. We're just waiting on one final vote. Okay, there are 17 no votes and nine yes votes. The motion fails.
Both days on the floor. All right. I would now need a motion for the ordinance and a second, and this is a first read. So that's where we will end it for tonight. So you all have a month to think about it and we will have discussion voting at the next meeting. So Supervisor Quinn moved. Supervisor Morehouse seconds. That's it on this one for tonight. We'll come back to it. All right. If you were just here for the ADU, this is your chance to flee. Moving on, moving back to the regular order of our agenda. Item 10A, resolution authorizing geo note parameters. Okay. I will give you the, the very, very, well, actually let me get a motion in a second. Supervisor Hagan moves. Who is, Supervisor Jetson seconds. Great. Okay, so this, this is the borrowing that was authorized. Was it last fall? Last fall for this year's budget, without which the budget would not be in balance. This motion is not whether or not we can borrow. It's simply the, the conditions under which we would borrow. So it is a simple majority vote. Just for context, if you have more questions about it, we will, we can absolutely answer those. One of us, Chris or Yada or me or someone will try and answer any questions. So we have the motion in a second. Any speaking to the resolution? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. 10B, resolution approving 2025-2029 capital improvement plan. Capital Improvement Workshop, you've all had a, at least some chance to look at this. I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Burnt seconds. Any speaking to the resolution? Do we, Chris, do you want to touch on it at all? Yada? Come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm very sore. I have some relatives over and they had me going and sightseeing a lot the last couple of days. I've been out of shape, obviously. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining this evening. I want to talk, speak to our capital improvement plan. You know, don't want to go too much into the detail, but there's a lot of network that had happened. As you're all aware, we started this process really early on in the year. We've met with the managers originally to propose a capital improvement plan that would identify their needs. Few meetings after that, we've made some changes based on, we wanted to, management wanted to be just sensitive to the funding that's available. So what you see also in your packet is what was originally submitted and some of the departments that reviewed their need and some of other events that had transpired that suggested to make some changes. For example, one of, one of them is just recent with 300,000 for the sheriff. Was it the storage facility? So it was decided to be excluded from this capital improvement plan because there is a study being done right now at the highway department with their highway needs to see if that can be identified later, what that costs. But with, as far as that project cost, the engineering designs and stuff like that. So that's why you'll see those two columns. So after that review, my team met and re-reviewed the funding sources. Therefore, in the resolution, it, we proposed and at our executive committee that it was option one. And option one does not require any borrowing. This would be where we were going to max out our, we have a debt fund balance. And that's remaining money from previous borrowings. Because when we borrow money, we estimate what the cost might be. And sometimes it actually costs less. So those are the saving, those are the remaining funds that's available, that's sitting in a specific fund that cannot be used without your approval. Because it is identified as a, a separate fund from the general fund. We also have some ARPA remaining money. When we did our budget in 2023, including the capital improvement, we've all identified to max out that ARPA money to make sure that we meet our requirements for committing those funds and make sure that they're being paid for at a specific year. So fast forward few, a year or two project, again, because it was estimated best estimate for those projects. As we gone through those two years, we've been closely looking at this ARPA funds to identify, you know, with the budget, where are we coming to as far as the actual cost? As also the needs. So with all that, at the end of the day, it was, we had remaining ARPA funds. And I believe there was a resolution last month or two months ago that adjusted the CIP budget and how the ARPA money is used. So we had some remaining funds. So we've applied those funds to this 2025 CIP. However, keep in mind that given the ARPA restrictions and when it needs to be accommodated, those items on the capital improvement plan will, could possibly need to be accommodated through a purchase order yet this year. And then the actual payment that's going to be made to, to that supplier will need to take place in 2025. So a good example, you know, even though this CIP doesn't really identify what's going to be paid with ARPA, once this resolution is approved, my team will sit and identify which items ARPA could go to. And possibly could be items that we can work with the supplier, well, the departments, department heads can work with their suppliers to see what is needed contract wise, PO wise, that, that we can have this commitment. Because keep in mind that we cannot write out a check without your approval for funds in the future. The other funds we have, there is some small dollar amount. Well, it's, it's still a lot of money as far as me, I'm concerned. But to our budget, I believe it's like a little over 100,000 would come out of the general fund. There is 1.5 million dollars that's going to come from a highway fund. After we restructured the accounts between the highway and the highway enterprise and the chart of accounts, I'm not going to go into detail with that. We're estimating that there's going to be a surplus. But we won't know for sure exactly what that number is until our audit, which is coming up here in the next couple of weeks. And then the other remaining funds, I think that was fun. Oh, and fees. And then the other remaining funds, I think that was fun. Oh, and fees. And fees are at NDC. And those those items are purchased if the funding is there. If they have enough of revenue coming in from the services that they provide.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Beata or speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Gilbert.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the the capital improvement plan. As it's written here. I don't know if it's for yet or for the IT department, which is what it's regarding. It it shows, first of all, that it was a, these are the biggest numbers on here outside of highway department. The three hundred fifty thousand and two hundred twenty thousand dollars, it says revised. But nothing changed. They're they're in the blue and it said revised. I didn't know what was revised. And then I guess my other question was, and I'm guessing nobody in the room actually knows other than perhaps IT. What a core network switch is and and three hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag associated with it.
Dan, why don't you come on up?
Sorry, it's a half million dollar question.
Nope, no, it's that's it is perfectly reasonable. That's. That's what we're here for.
I'm not sure what the revision is because it wasn't revised. I know. All right, so.
Typo apparently revised.
So a core network switch, I always like to describe our our network. So as you plug your computer into the wall or use or use wireless. Our our network is designed kind of like in a a hub and scope. Or a hub, a hub and spoke type model. So you have the the hub in the middle. And then connections out to all of the different places out there. So as you think of that in in the county. The hub is actually in a building or a room down the hall over there. And there's also one over in the in the in the judicial center. Those are our two cores, right? The hub is the core of that. And then outside of that, we have. Aggregation or access with switches, which are the ones that plug in all the little plugs against the wall kind of go to those different areas. So. They're the kind of the center of the network as all traffic kind of runs through them. They're bigger and essentially costly.
Right. Is there any? Shopping around sour or the the size of the switch we use or how many ports? I did a little research on on the concept of core switches prior to this and. Found a shocking variety of price tags. And and it, I I don't know. I mean, is this like for data storage for our servers? Is this? I mean, it's it's three hundred fifty thousand dollars and I'm just trying to. Because you can get some pretty huge core networks, which is for a lot less money than that. And I don't know how many gigabyte or port we're using, but. It seems massive.
Yep. So so the the switches that we're we're buying have a our core is a is a twenty gig core. And so we have essentially twenty gigabytes worth of data being transferred through that. And then that's going to connect off to all of those access switches. Don't quote me on it. I want to say they're forty-eight port. Switches. So there's essentially forty-eight ports. There's going to be enough to connect. The two cores to each other. And when I say the two cores, there's actually four. There's a lot of redundancy built into that. So it isn't like it is a core switch. There's essentially four core switches. And then you have to buy in order to have. Your core switches that are connected over fiber optics. There are modules that you have to plug into those switch. Each of those modules costs about a thousand dollars. To be able to connect a fiber to the other end. So two thousand dollars to connect the fiber on either end over a twenty gig connection. So we have redundancy. We have fiber that runs kind of both ways around this. So. We always like to say we're front end, front end loader proof. And that's what that's what kills fiber is road projects. Now, it's typically other things, but.
I've seen road projects kill it.
So it happens. So we have redundancies built in into that. So that's where it's it. It's a very robust network. And then as you then talk about the switches that we buy. We do buy enterprise grade switches that are we're looking, we plan on a seven year life cycle for those. So we're paying for devices that have warranties that'll last that long and and would build and maintain. I could go out right now and buy one of those that is a seven year old switch, but it could die in another year at a at a cheaper price. So. As we look at that, and that's why I always kind of run that divided by seven, and that's kind of your real number. In that end, the current ones that we have are actually ten years old and they're still completely in support. So. We're we're doing that. We the end of support has been announced. That's why they are on that on that schedule to be replaced because we know that. They will no longer be supported by the vendor in a in a year.
Okay. And is this associated with like whether we keep our data? I know they were talking with the security system, whether we were going to do cloud or we were going to do servers. Is that because like keeping servers in house or is that where we've still?
Yeah, we we have servers in house. It is a it's a smaller portion of our of our. Systems for the most part, most of our data, most of the systems that we use are are external. Which actually increases a lot of our network utilization. We're not necessarily because we're because we're going out the door for every single. Piece of communication that we have.
Well, I'm, yeah, just big numbers. And I don't think anybody really understands what like if it has said police interceptors and then it had a price tag, we could be like, wait, a truck doesn't cost that much. But nobody here really knows what.
No, that's it. That's what I used to do for a living. It's pretty reasonable.
Core switch, well.
So installing those kinds of systems.
And yeah, is that installation and all the stuff with them? I mean, that's. Even every seven years, it's a chunk of change.
Yeah, so that's the installation. We we would do that. We have. The companies typically will come out and help you with them, but we do a lot of that and a lot of configuration in order to do that. And so we have multiple components to our network and yeah, the edge was done last year.
Supervisor Burnt.
Just also coming from an IT world, I imagine that those switches are also pretty. I guess the security grade of those to be pretty robust as well as the configuration software can't be. Cheap because I know that a lot of. Specific softwares can be really expensive because only a few companies do that. So I imagine that also factors into that price tag.
You you bring up a very good point and and to your to to the comment before by Supervisor Gilbert. We we had to increase. The level of the switches that we have in order to provide a level of encryption that is certified by the FBI. So that the police, so that the sheriff's department's traffic can actually go over that. There's. There was a finding in an audit that we had three years ago that said that we needed to have that encryption and. And we have to buy the the level up switch in order to have that level of encryption.
Supervisor Shackleton.
Mr. Chairman. So does this also include the like, I don't know, the remote access? Stuff or the keyless entry stuff? Is that part of this or is that totally separate?
Totally separate.
Okay.
Supervisor Steens.
And I come from the horse and buggy era, so I'm really not very adept at this, but. We're going to spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars on our switches now and you get a seven year life. So basically. I'm looking at it like we've spent fifty thousand dollars a year for the switches. Is that a decent way of looking at it? So I would think that this this. Funding problem would request would not come up again for a while. Would would I be right? Okay, thank you.
There we go. I went red. Yes, that is correct. And and we would hope it to be ten. Yeah.
So these would vary then from the excess network switches that are in two years for three hundred thousand dollars.
To the access layer of the switches that are. Feeding every single receptacle throughout the building.
Right.
To be able to do that. So those are smaller, cheaper switches, but there's many more of them because there's a lot more connections.
All right, any other? Speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
You've kind of lost me through this a little bit, but. I can't support the resolution for an odd reason for most of my fellow board members. Is that I think we should spend more money in a particular area. And that particular area that I think we're not spending enough money on is in the highway department. I think we. You don't have to drive to Boyceville or Wheeler or Colfax. And not come back and say, you know, our roads really need some work. But then you'd better be careful which way you come back because if you come down County Trunk B. You'll be stopped at the railroad tracks. And you're going to have to go someplace else and you hope that you can get through there. So I had a fellow at the farm. This week that worked on round baler. And I says. When you come to work, where you come from? He says, well, I come from Bloomer. And I says, oh, so then you just come down. Forty and then over on B? He says, no, not anymore. I've got to come down forty and and hit E. And come down through Rusk and make my way to work. Well, that's a horrible road. I mean, you know. We're talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on switches. And I'd like to see us spend a few hundred. Thousand dollars on dump trucks full of blacktop.
Well, conveniently, the the budget as we are going to be looking at over the next few months. Will increase, will have a very large ask for highway.
Well, I saw seven million?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we should ask for twelve. Okay, ju- just just so we understand each other.
Absolutely.
I think our highway department has told us time and time again. That. Road lives are forty years or or twenty years and. And we can't get at them till forty years. So we throw money at stuff.
Excuse me. Supervisor Glenn, point of order.
I I appreciate Supervisor Bjork's. Thoughts about this, but he's not he's not talking about the capital improvement budget. He's talking about something different. And I don't think it's germane to this discussion.
I thought I was talking about the highway funding.
You're talking about highway projects.
Yeah, what Supervisor Quinn is is trying to clarify is that you were speaking to highway projects, which will be addressed in the general budget. Which is not germane to the CIP. And I think I have to roll.
Okay, you're you're you are you are correct. Bjork.
Any other speaking to the resolution? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? There we go. Motion passes. Budget adjustment, ten C. This will be a roll call vote. Human Services, Health Department, Land and Water Conservation, Highway. This is the very typical budget adjustment. Grant money comes in. We have to authorize people to spend it, et cetera. It's just. Making sure that our balance books are in balance and have been properly approved by the board. So I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bauer moves. Supervisor Jets in seconds. Any speaking to the motion? Seeing none, we will go ahead and have our roll call vote. Yeah, they're all it's it's a single resolution. Thank you for the question for clarification. We've gotten in the habit of trying to put them all together so we don't have to sick have six of these. We're waiting on two. Tom, Diane? You, okay. Okay, came through. There we go. Motion passes. All right, ten D, resolution approving MOU for trail acquisition, land and water conservation. Make it a motion in a second, then I'm going to get Chase to come up here and explain what we're actually talking about and answer any questions. Supervisor Canear, Supervisor. Supervisor Quinn beat you to it, Supervisor Steen. Okay, Supervisor Steen seconds. Working on it. There we go.
Hello again. As I mentioned in my report before, there was a list of programs that we work in and there's always some. Et cetera at the end. And here's one of those topics that we find ourselves involved with. But. Before you and in your packet today is a resolution and some supporting documentation regarding a memorandum of understanding. That we're being asked to enter into with Landmark Conservancy and the County of Pepin. And it's in regard to the Chippewa River or the the Chippewa Trail. That extends from the municipality of the city of Durand in Pepin County. Up to the junction with the Red Cedar Trail. This resolution is particularly to authorizing the memorandum of understanding. And that memorandum of understanding is related to the ability that Landmark Conservancy. An entity that can have the ability to an opportunity to apply for additional grants beyond what the counties are available or eligible for. To provide some funding to support the acquisition of this trail. The reason for the acquisition is currently that section of trail, which is six and a half miles. Is one and a half miles of those is within the borders of Dunn County. Is currently owned by NSP Company or AKA Excel Energy. They're looking to divest in that property. It is a former railroad corridor. Approximately thirty-seven acres or one point five miles here being here within Dunn County. They are, as may many of you may be aware, are divesting in other properties in the area. And this is the latest one. They have approached both counties. With interest in maintaining that trail as a public asset, public entity and public access for citizens and visitors to. Utilize that that property. We, as a county, both Dunn and Pepin Counties have pursued potential grant funding to acquire this acquisition. However, due to timeliness of. And timelines for other grants that we are eligible for, we're not able to accomplish that in the timeframe that might be necessary for this acquisition. Therefore. We reached out to Landmark Conservancy. They're willing to participate in this and help shepherd this through this acquisition. At this point in time, we are unsure of the exact cost that the county might incur. But is estimated that an estimated appraised value for this property is around four thousand dollars per acre. And the grant money would be able to supply fifty percent of an appraised value cost. It is also our understanding based on communication with Excel or NSP. That they're willing to sell this property at half the appraised value estimate. Therefore, there's a potential that we could acquire this property and maintain its public access for very little cost. Potentially free as as the sale goes, but closing costs, title work, we could have a nominal fee or expense there. Which would be shared with Pepin County. So while that decision to fully acquire that property has yet to be made, we need to pursue this process. Follow through on an appraisal and submit a grant application by August first. Of which Landmark Conservancy is willing to do all that work for us. And again, they have the. The option and opportunity to supply us with that service so we can pursue this. So. With that, if any PR and D committee members, if I've missed anything, or if you have questions, Emile, try to answer as best I can. Yeah. Oh, they're on the map. Yeah, sure. So on the map, you can see the junction. So Durand is on the lower left hand side of the screen. And then coming up to where the Red Cedar Trail meets Chippewa Trail. You can see that intersection there. That is the portion of trail that is currently owned by NSP. And there's a you can see a small section there. Dan is kind of highlighting. That is a one and a half mile section that would be in Dunn County, potential Dunn County ownership. You can, I think it's a it's a fun map to look at because you look at the connection that this trail has and the opportunities it provides for people that are interested in using this trail throughout the area, seventy six miles worth of a network, hiking, biking, and this section of trails also provides access in the winter time for for snowmobile trail use. So yeah, so it's one and a half miles would be our portion. Pepin is also pursuing and actually at their board meeting tonight is also having the same conversation. So.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that trail already, you know, developed on Dunn County's land? Or is it?
So yes, that trail is in existence. It has been ever since the railroad was removed. This section of trail that we're speaking of right now is a paved portion of that trail. And that was a process that took place many years ago through Pepin County. Currently, Pepin County is highway department maintains this section of trail. The remainder of the trail of the Chippewa Trail all the way into Eau Claire is a gravelled surface. So but this is a pretty nice amenity that many, many users use.
Yeah, it's a great bike trail.
So you're saying that that the Pepin County like maintains that trail? So Dunn County is not liable for any maintenance on it?
At this point in time, because it is in private ownership and has been, that was the, I guess, the deal that was worked out to maintain that trail as as open to the public and at public access.
Thank you.
Certainly, should the acquisition go through, that is some of a topic of discussion about how we continue that maintenance.
Supervisor Shackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if we don't fake this honor, it ends up being a substantial cost, I guess. I don't know how substantial what I'm saying. If we can get it at little to no cost, probably a good idea, but obviously we'll have a little maintenance. So what is the alternative if we don't? I mean, NSP or Excel could potentially sell it to someone else. Is that what our concern is, I'm assuming?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yes. So the the option to sell to into other private ownership, which then could cut off access to the to the trail. At this point in time, it's my understanding that, you know, Pepin County is obviously quite concerned that the the one and a half miles could be chunked out and then access from Durand to the rest of the network is potentially at jeopardy. So that's where we're being asked to kind of play a role in it. There potentially could be other options where Pepin County could pursue to to purchase the whole thing. I'm not sure how that would work exactly, but at this point in time, we're asked to kind of play a role in it.
Well, I think if you can get a grant and it's very little cost to us and I'm guessing we're already maintaining down to it, I would assume, or?
So at this point in time, the state of Wisconsin owns or maintains the, actually, they own and maintain the remaining portions of that Chippewa Trail up and through Eau Claire connecting to the Old Abe Trail and then the Red Cedar Trail that comes into Menominee here. Pepin County Highway Department is the only ones that are maintaining this section from that junction of the Red Cedar Trail on down to Durand and certainly would be a point of conversation that we would need to have with Pepin as far as maintaining. But at this point in time, there is no expense for Dunn County to be maintaining any section there or any portion of the trail.
Yeah, because it seems silly for us to go down there and maintain a mile or a mile and a half a trail, I guess.
Right. Yeah, and portions are also maintained by the city of Menominee and various volunteer groups to to sort of maximize the the quality of the trail. Yeah. Yep. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I assume that this is probably property that they acquired for the Tyrone plant that did not happen, would you think?
Yeah, that is part of the history here. Yes, when there's looking at a power plant in that area, part of the rail, maintaining rail access, even though the rail had already been somewhat defunct at the time. But since that really isn't happening, they've been divesting in a lot of property in that Tyrone area. And this is being the latest that they don't intend to be.
And then the other thing is you've mentioned a mile and a half and you've mentioned $2,000 an acre with some grant. How many acres are you talking? I mean, you know, what are you measuring?
Yeah, so it's a it's a, you know, it's a railroad corridor. So the one and a half miles that would be within the Dunn County boundaries is approximately thirty seven acres. The remaining portion, the other six miles that would be in Pepin County is approximately sixty three acres.
You know, just as I think it's probably, I don't I don't want Dunn County to take on any more expense. But I think number one, it wouldn't be out of line asking NSP or Excel Energy just to donate it. You know, they acquired all that Tyrone property from individual landowners. And when I cut time to divest, they did not go back to the people that they took the land from. I mean, the land was taken. And it just kind of rubs me the wrong way that then they're going to turn around and want Dunn County buy it, buy it, buy it. But, you know, what the heck? I think it's a great project. I'm just not in favor.
I can comment that that ask was made, especially through negotiations that Pepin County has had with NSP about just donating it. And here we are.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Supervisor Wolf.
Yes, thank you. Being that technically this is my backyard, I grew up on that trail. It would be very disappointing to the people that ride their bicycles, do their walking, hunting, trapping, all the other stuff that's available. You're talking about cutting off a town from the the process. It's it's a heck of an area and for a very small input to it, we can keep it that way. I'd have to say that I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wolf. Any other speaking or questions for Chase? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Oofta. Ten E, resolution opioid settlement. I'll need a motion in a second, then I'm going to let Nick handle the quick explanation. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor burnt. Nick, take it away.
I'll try try and be brief. Just some background for members of the board who weren't here in 2017. In November of 2017, the county board approved the county's participation as a plaintiff, along with a lot of other local governments and non-governmental organizations or entities, approved participation as a plaintiff in a lawsuit against a number of pharmaceutical manufacturers, distributors and retailers. All around the United States, claims were made and filed in federal court and state court. Dunn County's case is venue in federal court and it's been grouped with other cases as as an MDL, multi-district litigation. There's more than 2,400 plaintiffs now in the in this multi-district litigation. And they're all kind of consolidated for discovery, pre-trial motions, a bunch of other things that would be duplicative if they were conducted over and over and over and over again in the same courts and courts next to each other in districts in the same state, et cetera. So it's all being managed still in a multi-district litigation. There have been settlements. Dunn County has been involved in two settlements that were reached. I think the first one had five defendants that had settled. We had one last year. Some defendants have filed for bankruptcy and they're that's still they're being monitored through the through the MDL. At this time, well, through all of this, we've had legal counsel representing the county's interests and most of the vast majority of counties in the state of Wisconsin have had the same two or three law firms that have been working together cooperatively in representing all of the counties, all these counties' interests. I think there are four counties that went that hired different counsel. Our council have been keeping us up to date and bringing us important documents. This is one of them. A tentative settlement has been reached with Kroger Company. In this settlement, Kroger is going to pay 1.2 billion dollars, not not to Wisconsin, not to Dunn County, but through the nation, over eleven annual payments, assuming full participation and approval in Wisconsin. The first payment, the first payments in Wisconsin could be dispersed yet in 2024 with subsequent payments received in March each year after that until the eleven payments have been made. So early on, early on in the litigation, when settlement had become a realistic possibility, there really was a lot of considerable amount of time focus by the attorneys on both sides, by the court, experts, you know, in economics and and they came up with a kind of a a formula to determine each county's participation allocation. Dunn County's allocation is 0.442%. Now, that's been approved by the by the Judge Polster, who's the head judge for the MDL. So settlement proceeds, once they're received, they have to be placed into a designated account. They can only be used for approved services. And we have a deadline of getting these documents back to our legal counsel of August 12th. So participation in the settlement requires county board approval of this resolution and then some signatures, either Supervisor McCullough or his designee. Not participating in the settlement leaves the county alone in filing a lawsuit, its own lawsuit against Kroger to try to you know, get a get reimbursement for the costs relating to the opioid epidemic. So unless there are any questions, I guess that's my kind of nutshell summary of of how we got here and what's what this current resolution, the purpose of it is.
I'll just note that there have been several previous settlements in this ongoing series of cases, and this is the same proportion that we have had in each previous one. Essentially, we're voting to accept the money. Anybody have any questions? We're speaking Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. How many others are there? I mean, this is Kroger. You've mentioned that there's been settlements already. Are there others with outstanding yet or is this kind of the end of the trail with this deal or? Just a just a guess.
I think there are four, like four that have been settled and maybe three outstanding.
Might be.
I'm trying to get the names of them.
But it's in that general range.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, there there, I mean, there were there were quite a few defendants. And like Walgreens, for example, was one of what I I imagine Walmart might have been too because
Pardon?
Yeah. Because they they retail. So there were a lot of defendants and as as the there are state, there are state actions around the United States. So some entities filed their own lawsuits or got collectively filed lawsuits in state court. Most of them are in federal court. And I don't know the the number of defendants off the top of my head, but it was quite a few.
Directed.
Yeah, there there are over 2,400 plaintiffs that are alone that are in the MDL and there's there was a settlement.
So this second question is this money, our share or whatever, the 0.442%?
Percent?
Yeah. Is what the number, I think you said?
Yes.
Okay. That comes back to Dunn County?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever, whatever comes to Wisconsin, that's Dunn County's share. There's also an allocation made for attorney fees that's placed. It's placed in a fund. Each each participant in as a plaintiff signed a fee agreement. So some of it gets placed into a fund to help pay for the attorneys. The state enacted some legislation. The state was never involved as a party in the lawsuit, but they they have been able to create a legal obligation that the settlement proceeds. Some of the settlement proceeds also go to the state government. But as with all the other plaintiffs, the the funds have to be used for purposes that are related to abating the problems brought brought about through the opioid epidemic. So providing, is it fentanyl? Injections, injection kits. Narcon, Narcon, I'm sorry. That's fentanyl is the bad stuff. Narcon, response kits, you know, having them in police cars, having additional services through human services. All kind, there are a lot of different kinds of things, but they all have to be basically related to abating the the problems that arise from the opioid epidemic.
Sure.
I'll just provide just a tiny bit more background. So there were, as Nick indicated, there were a lot of defendants in the case. There were the manufacturers, there were the distributors, and then there was the retail. And so they've settled in various ways. Some of them are payouts over eighteen years. Some of them are payouts where they paid two years upfront and then they'll have like eight years after that. Some some are payouts of this one, I think. What did you say was 11 years or something? Eleven years. So the various amounts of payouts so far, we have received a little over $200,000, like $250,000 maybe. It's just sitting in an opioid account. We have a group that's worked on looking at how to expend it, but also knows that it's it is a resource that can be utilized over time and want to make sure that we are utilizing it in the best manner possible. So it's currently sitting in an interest-bearing account. And this new money, should you choose to expect it, accept it, will go into that account as well.
Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. Just to game this out, what is, if we were to not take this and pursue legal action ourselves as a county, what are our chances of getting anything near this or better than what is being offered right now?
Cost without pay.
I would have to say almost nothing, almost no chance. This is, I mean, there are there are, there are all these cases and there are court-appointed, you know, experts that are coordinating information. There's discovery that's being coordinated by attorneys and there's, you know, all these, think of a judge that has 2,400 plaintiffs in one case and all the work that goes into it in order to manage it and make sure that people aren't doing inappropriate things, using the legal system inappropriately, making sure that judicial resources are conserved as much as possible so that duplicative actions aren't aren't taken. For example, if we want to take Supervisor Quinn's deposition, everybody gets to come to the deposition and ask questions. That way we don't have 100 depositions of the same person over and over again when we may reasonably expect the answers to be the same to the questions, no matter who asks them. So there really is a lot that goes into it. I, you know. So it, there really is a lot that goes into it. I, you know.
Short answer.
I couldn't do it.
Highly expensive, very low chance of reward. Any other speaking to the resolution? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. That ends item ten. Onto item eleven. Uh, consideration reports, resolutions, and ordinances come to the county board from the standing committees, committee on administration, resolution for one-time vacation, pay down. For nine one one, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bauer and Supervisor Shackleton beat you to the, beat you to the punch. You got Bauer and Shackleton, great. Um. We, we did one of these just, I think, last month. You all know what we're talking about. Does anybody need a more thorough explanation? Great. Any speaking to the resolution? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Ten A two, Resolution Amending Inventory of Job Classifications, IT Department. I need a motion in a second. Uh, Supervisor Steen moves, Supervisor Burnt seconds. This, if anyone has any questions, we can get Dustin or Jim up here to answer. I think it's fairly clear. All right, seeing no questions, all in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. Motion passes. Eleven A three, Resolution Adopting, Adopting a Policy on Policies. Which, as bureaucratic and silly as it sounds, I think is actually quite important. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bishon, Supervisor Morehouse. You've all got it in your packet. You've had a chance to look at it. Does anyone have any questions? Um, if so, I will, I will drag Dan up here because this has been his baby. Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Eleven B, uh, ordinance rezone, Pelner, I need a motion in a second. Uh, Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Shackleton. Um, pretty typical rezone. If anyone would like, Supervisor Quinn can address it. Uh, does anyone have any questions, Supervisor Quinn? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. B two, another rezone. Polar root, believe I pronounced that correctly. I need a motion in a second. Uh, Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gilbert. Same thing, if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Supervisor Quinn would be happy to uh leap in front of them. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. We already dealt with B three announcements. Okay, our next regular county board meeting is out of sequence because we do not have a meeting in August. So our next county board meeting will be July thirty first, same time. Important to make sure you are aware of that. Um, we have a Dunn County Employee Appreciation Picnic. Which you are all invited to. It's generally a pleasure. I get you a chance to meet with the various uh people in the, in the. The, who work for the county in a informal and quite fun. Uh, there will be a dunk tank. This will be your opportunity to throw a baseball and drop me in icy cold water. Um, if nothing else draws you in, that might do it. Uh, you got an invite in your email, just RSVP and let them know you're coming. Um. Super, Supervisor Thomas and then Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, also. Between now and our next meeting is going to be the Dunn County Fair. So hopefully everybody will get a chance to get out and partake in some of the events.
Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Uh, seeing that the employee picnic, all the department heads uh. Uh, are actively doing their job and I think we should thank them for hanging out tonight also.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. That is, that is a great sentiment. Thank you all. It's been a very long evening.
I got one.
Uh, okay, we got two more.
Uh, really quickly, uh, the new board members received a survey from me on behalf of Doug Mel, our um. Press release person, writer. If you could please tend to those and get those back. Or like to get some information out to the public about who you are and what motivated you to be a part of this wonderful organization.
Thank you, Chris. Nick?
Real short, only because I'm a big fan, the Dunn County dairy, usually it's a dairy breakfast. But this year it's a dairy brunch at the Gilbertson Farms in Elk Mound on uh Saturday, June twenty ninth. From nine to one.
All right, thank you all for your patience. Oh, Supervisor Larry Bjork. There we go. All right, thank you all for your patience. It has been a long and intense meeting. I appreciate it. This is. This is what we're here for. We are adjourned.